Good evening. This is our February 20th City Council meeting, and with that, we'll start with the roll call.
Mayor?
Here.
Councilor Sendra Grass?
Here.
Councilor Phillips?
Here.
Councilor Richards?
Here.
And Councilor Earth, if not for him yet.
I'm here.
Okay, with that, we have a new council member. I'd like to introduce everybody and have him go through the process of the oath of office, Earth.
Yeah.
Just step to the podium, please, and Shirley will read something to you.
I'll say aye and you say your name. Say aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
To or affirm.
Affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
Of discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of the city council.
Of the city council.
Of the city of Orinoco.
The city of Orinoco.
In the county of Olmstead.
The county of Olmstead.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
Best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, they're gonna take a picture while she can't, but that's fine. Thank you.
Welcome, Mayor.
Welcome, Mayor.
Have a seat here.
See what I can do for you.
So with that, well, look at our agenda for this evening. And I would like to add a couple of things. I move things around. One, I would like to move the development agreement from V eight. No, can we? I'm not speaking to the members of that, isn't it? And D, D five. Move D five up to before the water and sewer.
Just D five?
Uh, no, there's something else here. We also have another request, and this is from the BFW for the water bill. So I would like to move V eight. They have a request, a broken water pipe water bill, excess water, move that up to petitions.
So that'd be?
Under B.
B?
Yeah, B number eight. Action item up to petitions of Romanum, Romanum six is one of the actions. Item number. Another one is under EDA. Under, yeah, Environmental Development Authority EDA, I'd like to add number C under action item. And this was to officially approve Jan Throsten's six-year term to the EDA.
Now, where are you putting it? Because right now we're under.
Uh, under Development Authority EDA, item number one. We have A, B, and adding C.
Oh, gotcha.
For Jan's. It's an oversight. I put the two officers, but we also took care of Jan's six-year term.
Is that it, Riley?
I think that's.
I would like to add something too.
Anything else move around?
Yeah, I would like to add under the fire department, under E, uh, under seven. E and number four, um, to have the Orinoco Township, uh, first responders. I'd like to have that added.
Item number four?
Yeah, as a number four.
Township support, is what you said?
Oh, yeah, I just have it as as increased, but I wanted to discuss that. Is that it? Yeah, that's it for me.
I'd like to add under personnel, which is I, I'd like to add a number four. That one extend offer to part-time admin assistant. Under personnel?
Well, it's under number two. We got city administrator and part-time.
Oh, I didn't see.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, we'll scratch that one then.
Yeah, let's scratch that, sorry. I didn't see the part-time.
Any other requested changes? I do have one more. It's it's under petitions. A permanent public utility and drainage easement silver point partner LLC. I would like to bring that back at a later date. And we'll talk about that. Scratch that one. It's not a change. I'll talk about it at the.
So letter A?
We've already moved A. We'll just, we'll talk about it at the, when it comes up on the agenda.
Okay.
So we'll take it, take that after.
No, I.
Leave it on there.
Leave it on.
Will just be a discussion item. Okay, so we have four additions, I believe. We'll move D five, three, four, water and sewer development agreement for Two Sisters. To remove the waste of water issued from V eight to petitions or BFW. I will add F one C for Jan Throsten's approval for a six-year term to the EDA. And item four under E, fire department. That's for your township. Then I'll make a motion. We approved the agenda.
Second.
Any other comments? None. All those in favor, say, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Both sign. Next item is our public forum. With three minutes time limit per person, the city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be part of the city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address the city council during public forum, please step up to the podium and sign, state your name and address, and fill out the form provided. Speakers will be recognized only once. Uh, you will be timed for the three minutes. Begin speaking with the green card that is raised by the committee. Yellow card indicates you have thirty seconds left. With the red card, it means that you have reached a period of time limit and request you stop, so. With that, anybody who'd like to speak to public forum, please step forward.
My name is Randy, and I know you've seen me before, but I'm just here to get some continuous feedback on the property that's by me at 115 Third Street Southwest. Uh, we do see action there, however, um, I don't know the timeframes that are involved. I don't know whether we get orders on when we building permits or I believe it's called demolition permits are need to be called on, and if I could either find out how to find out this information or have someone speak to me about it, that would be great. Um, I do still see animals. I do still see the roof sagging on the main. Um, and I just have health concerns for the owner. The owner, um, I mean, it it's not healthy. It's not safe, and I still have concerns with it being across one of our main parks. Um, and, um, I guess that's really all I can say. I just hope that someone can keep me filled in on what's going on on that. That would be great. Okay?
Thank you, Randy. Uh, third call to public forum?
Where's the yellow and green flag? She's got a. My name is Ross Parker. I'm here to represent the Orinoco BFW. I'm the quartermaster, which is a fancy name for treasurer. This winter, we had a little freeze up in our building due to the cold weather and a couple other conditions. And as the handout I've given you shows, our water bills, the top one on the left side is January of this year. December through January goes, that's the year 2023. What column on the right is year 2022. Our our water bills were less than, well, the last six months, they've been averaging between twenty-nine and thirty-two dollars a month. After that water freeze up, which, uh, we weren't aware of for a while. When I came where I called clean up right away, he was, did a great job, shut the water off outside the building. Got a pump, start cleaning out, drying out the basement. It had warmed up a little bit then, by the time we found out about it. So we didn't end up with a lot of excessive damage in the building. Couple faucets froze, but not a big deal. But, uh, we had the furnace repaired and a lot of heater fixed. That was only under ten, twenty-five dollars. When we got the water bill from the city, we kind of had a little bit of a heart attack. We were figuring maybe a little increase. The water bill is four hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventeen cents. Since since then, we've had two pancake breakfasts. Each one, one of them was under three hundred dollars, and the other one we got a little over three, like three-twenty. When the problem started, we had a pancake breakfast there that we collected a total of thirteen hundred dollars, and we gave the whole works to Eagles Castor Telethon. So we do support in the in the community. But, uh, that that water bill is going to set us back about six months. And I'm here just to beg for mercy. That's about all I can say. And I've got to get down out of here now because she just gave me the yellow flag. Any questions?
No, we'll discuss it too. If you have any questions, we'll have you come back to the podium.
Okay, I will say that we have insurance. Our guy checked it over. He said we got a good policy. However, our deductible is a thousand dollars. So we didn't meet it.
Thanks, Russ.
Thanks, Russ. Uh, third and final call for public forum. Speaking, we'll close public forum at six forty-four PM. So with our petitions, um, the first one that we have listed is a permanent public utility green achievement, which is along the north side of the Two Sisters property. That was to be built, uh, used for a green building. Uh, we learned today that, um, it needs to be evaluated a little bit further from the standpoint, uh, we're reviewing. It's in the right of way that owns by the county versus part of the city limits. So we've, we're working with, um, somebody at the, uh, county office that filled contact with this afternoon and tried to work out to make sure we understand exactly where the right of way is when that growth was like in twenty thirteen was granted to the city for all the rework. We're not sure of the right of way designation, so that's something that we're looking into, where the county's looking into for, so. Hopefully, it's it's a, it's a minor issue. We'll bring it back to the, uh, council on March meeting, so. If we didn't feel comfortable signing it today or moving it until we get the right verbiage and the resolution, so. Of the Eastman, I'm sorry. So with that, we'll just bring that back. Is there anything else, Joe, that you need to comment on?
No, I think that kind of summed it up. There was just, uh, that right of way was turned back, we believe, in two thousand and thirteen with the reconstruction of the road when the county turned that back, and it doesn't look like that turn back was recorded at the county and the GAS system, so we've got to kind of work through that and clean that up with the county.
So is that the, is that the part of when they turned Minnesota Avenue back to?
Yeah, that whole right-of-way corridor, and there's one parcel right at that intersection there. That's really the right-of-way that still shows it as county ownership, but, you know, the whole corridor was turned back to.
But it's actually the city's, but it's just that it's recorded, right?
Right, right. Looks like there's a.
Yeah, if you look at this exhibit A, you can see where there's.
Yeah.
Old State County. We'll get that taken care of. I don't think it's a showstopper, but we want to make sure that Eastman is written correctly before we. Next item is, um, Heather Groby from Sheena's request for Philly's requesting deviation to the C code. There's a, uh, a memo in the packet with Heather's request.
Make a motion to, uh, accept Heather's request for her gathering.
I'll second.
Any comments? Discussion?
Does she need a gathering permit?
What's that?
Does she need a gathering? He's already. I think that, I think a business is a.
Just a deviation. I'm assuming she's getting a gathering permission, yes, because it's size of group, I guess.
That she's willing to pay for gathering permit, that there is off of it. Um, last year too, you you had security. You're going to have security again this year.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't have, um.
Would you please just step to the podium? Thank you.
I didn't, I did not hire security. We were security ourselves. Um, I do have a law enforcement degree. It's very expensive to hire security as well. Um, I did make a call to Olmstead County, letting them know that we had an event going on, um, in case of an incident, um, but we had, we were wristbanding, we were monitoring, we tried to have a gate to corral people coming in. I had quite a bit of staff on duty, all eyes on.
So everything was good last year. You know, I really enjoyed it, you know, and and it was organized and and well under control. I just, that was one of the things we had talked about last year was was part of that, so. At least to make sure that the sheriffs are aware.
Yeah.
Okay, that that's going on, I think would be wise.
Yes, absolutely. And last year I did, um, apply for a gathering permit.
Right.
I just was, um, temporarily extending the noise ordinance, um, for an hour. I think the ordinance is eleven o'clock here. And I would like it to be midnight if possible. I would pretty much do everything exactly, the setup anyways, for the noise, um, just like we did in the past.
I don't know that there were any companions. No, I didn't hear it either, and he had a tap, which was kind of nice with everything, the way it was done. I thought it was well done. I really did.
The only comment I heard that they thought the music wouldn't be on eleven o'clock, like some of the residents to the west, so. I thought it's just their comment, so.
I think we applied, though, for the ordinance to be extended until midnight.
Oh, it wasn't a night, okay.
Yes, yeah, from what I remember. That is what I came and asked. That's what I would like.
It was, you're right.
Yeah.
This year.
As I still question, we need a gathering permit for it, just to extend the hours that we might got in. Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming forward and asking for the deviation. I just, we have some to tell our residents and too, so.
Um, I don't know if the date is listed on your paperwork at all.
No, you just had May.
No, just say May.
It said May twenty twenty-four was all it was.
Um, I'm looking for, um, Saturday, May eighteenth. Right, the next is the date that I'm hoping.
It is in the letter in the second page.
Any other comments? Any in all the favor, say, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, owes?
Thank you, and thank you for the streetlights.
Security lights.
Okay, uh, the other request is to look at the BFW water bill.
Well.
If you look at the difference, you know, if you look at the previous month at twenty-nine sixty-four, that's probably a little dollar. Everything is a it's excessive, um, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-three cents.
I averaged the last, did I get the last five months, uh, for that? And I came up with thirty dollars and I can't remember. So that was in the, that was in January of twenty twenty-four? So I I think with the average, I just. Let's see, just reduce it back to look at what the December bill was for. No, I I just, I I took the average as how I looked at it to be realistic. There's the February bill. Most of them are within a dollar. This is thirteen months.
So I make a motion, we reduce the water bill to twenty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents for, uh, the month of, uh, January.
A second.
Any other comments? Seems fair for the normal use that they use it throughout the whole year, so. All in favor, say by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, owes?
Okay, Councilor Richards, that's second, okay.
Okay, um, next item as we moved up was the, uh, the amendment, uh, or development agreement to Cedar Woodlands, third block, two block one, and outlaw at C, so. In your packet, you'll notice there's, uh, there's no differentiation of the pages, but the first forty-one pages of, that's in your packet, is what we call the clean version. And the next forty-one pages is the red line agreement that was going back and forth between the, uh, city attorney and Cedar Woodlands, um, Two Sisters attorney, so. I would remind you, like, to speak briefly about any other comments, or is this, council members have any questions or counts?
I can just say a few things about it. Um, so there is, there was previously an amended, uh, a development agreement for Cedar Woodlands third. And so that, that development, portions of that development have been sold to other owners. The Glenn's, Mutter Coach, people bought one of the lots. And then the gas center was owned by a different entity. So that's why, if you're wondering why that the development agreement is only applicable to those lots, lot two, block one, and outlaw C, that that's why. If it was applicable and recorded against the entire development property, you'd have to get the consent of those other owners. And really, the amet, the terms that are being amended really don't affect those lots anyway, and so, um, you really could have just applied to lot two, block one only. The reason that outlaw C was included, if you recall from the Glenns, that you might not remember this, but in when Glenns did their development agreement and their, their project, there was a term in the original agreement about, um, water access, or excuse me, sewer access charge credits. So the original developer at, when they developed that whole development, fronted money or, you know, invested money into the development for certain infrastructure. That was then going to be credited back to him as water access credits later when the lots ended up being developed. And so that development agreement specified that those credits applied to L lot B and L lot C. And so the credits were given to Glenns, who developed L lot B. That's the Glenns Mutter Coach, uh, property. I don't think you were on council when this happened, but, so I take that back for you. You wouldn't remember it, but, um, for Paul, but. And so the developer now owns both L lot C and lot two, but he's only developing lot two, and so the theory was he wants to get the credits now. He doesn't want to wait to develop L lot C and get the credits when L lot C is developed. He'd rather get them now. And we thought that was reasonable, so that's why this applies to those, both of those lots, and will be reported against both of those lots, and so this kind of settles the issue of credits. And we've come to a, just a summary agreement about, you know, what the credits will be moving forward, and it's in the agreement. And then that's, that's one main issue we were kind of going back and forth on. The rest of this is just standard language, uh, development agreement language. It allows for, um, some financial security, in favor of the city for the development of the public improvements, which are minimal. I guess that would be the other thing, and maybe Joe could comment on it, but there was approvals given. You get, if you don't remember this, and you were on the council for this, Paul, but you gave prior approval to start the development, the grading work at the time, a couple of months ago. And so that was a big chunk of those, so, but the security is fifteen thousand of cash escrow, which is, in our view, sufficient for a small amount of work that's left. And then there's also payment of the city's costs, uh, like construction observation fees would be the big one, I think, and then, uh, this amount for legal fees and engineering fees. And then it just has other standard development kind of conditions. And so that, I think the sum and substance of it is, we went through multiple drafts with the developer and me and Joe and Riley a little bit. And we went back and forth on the agreement, and this is, this is agreed to by all the parties now. So, um, there's that, and and I can, I mean, that's a gloss over, but it's, um, a long agreement. I would also note that, you know, the agreement's forty-one pages, but a lot of that is attachments to it. It's not actually the agreement itself, so it's not that long, but. Um, so if anybody read it, I mean, I know that this was, we, I guess the last thing I'd say is we agreed to it pretty late last week. I was obviously out of town, but we did get it in the, to the city and agree to. So I think, just speaking for the developer and his attorney, I think their, their main issue is that they need to get the construction moving as soon as possible, so they want to see it addressed by the city as soon as possible, so if not tonight, they'd be requesting a special meeting before the next regular meeting. So that's it. And I can, I can probably answer questions, or Joe can answer questions about what's in it. Anybody has questions? I know, I forgot your name, Herb. Yeah, you don't know, yeah, so.
I have nothing to say on that.
You're good, you're good.
No, on the rest of it, for the summary of the cash requirements, and that that's all going to remain the same, and I'm looking at page twenty-one.
Yeah, so that, yep.
Okay, so that'll all remain the same, okay. I just wanted to double check on that.
The majority of that is the sanitary sewer availability charge. I mean, that's the, you know, the bulk of that money. Um, and then also, I guess, one other thing to note is, the city had entered into a cost-security agreement with the developer prior to this to cover some of the city's costs. Joe, do you remember how much it was?
I think there was a couple iterations of it. The first one was probably five thousand dollars.
So they had already paid us that for, to cover the city's costs up to the point of approving the development agreement, which I think is the city's standard practice. Um, so that that wouldn't, this would be above whatever that was, and I think it was five thousand, but I just didn't.
So, so if I understood you right, we basically exchanging some sanitary sewer credits for water credits.
No, no, not sewer for water. Sewer for sewer, but just on different lots.
Okay. Exactly. It's water for water. It's, yeah, no sewer credits.
I see here it says a sewer availability charge.
Yeah.
For twenty twenty-four. Does that mean there's a charge each year or is just a one-time charge?
For twenty twenty four, does that mean there's a charge each year, or is just a one time charge?
It's calculated, um. It it increases every year, and so we were previously talking about this in twenty three, but then in twenty four, it it went up.
So so they're gonna pay a sanitary availability charge each year?
No.
No. That's why, that's why, that's what this is looking like it's saying, that they paid it for twenty twenty four.
Well, that that just references what the fees are.
Well, that tells me that there may be a fee for other years.
Yeah, there is.
No. Okay.
Yeah, and I I misspoke, I strike everything I said, water access charge, not sewer access charge. So not not sewer for water, sewer, or excuse me, water for out lots, you would be exchanged for water on this lot, lot two. Sewer is a different thing, and so that, and that's, and those are in different pots, too, you have different sewer funds and water fund, that's.
Understood.
Complicated, I guess.
Not really.
Yes.
It's not.
Different pot, well, different fees for different pots, and you don't co-mingle, whereas you used to have one, you called it whack and sack. I don't know if that was the official term of it, but there was no. Yeah, I mean, there was no sewer, so, but now there's sewer.
Yeah.
We got sewer soon enough, right?
Any comments for?
I just was wondering how the construction is coming and and where they're at, I know that they're back there someplace. Aren't they?
Yep.
So how you looking on construction?
We don't have a building permit, so we're not constructing.
Agreement. Well, the agreement kicks off the building permit and moving forward, continue to move forward, I should say, so that's the urgency. Any other comments?
So does this, does this any in any way, shape, or form? Effect that across the street from there, the uh, is it their drainage field across the street that set up for gassing go? On the east side of that street? Or no, Joe, do you?
So I'm assuming you you're talking about the community waste treatment system that's up there.
That's for all those Cedar Woodlands, or that that's just for?
Ah, it was, it was developed for lots one and two and um potentially more if there was capacity. Um, it is in service, it services gassing go now, uh that's the only customer. But as part of this agreement, um, the developer petition petitioned to be part of the sewer and water or the sewer project that is being constructed. And so we stubbed sewer service to that parcel, and they'll be able to eliminate that community waste treatment system uh here this summer. Uh, when they complete those improvements and all of the flow that used to go to the community waste treatment system will go to the city's municipal system.
Now, was there any agreement made on what that? That drainage field is going to be used for?
There is.
It'll have to be abandoned after they hook up.
It's spelled out in the development agreement that it does get abandoned, it gets abandoned by the developer. The developer maintains ownership of it, and they can redevelop that.
That's the original development agreement?
Yes.
So this is the amendment.
It's it, we have this original development agreement of.
Cedar Woodlands three.
Gassing go project, that's Cedar Woodlands three, right?
Yeah, well, it was just gassing go originally, and that is all vacant lots, it was lot one, lot two.
Right.
Apids, but they were all vacant, you know, so.
Tom, just clarify, Tom Gathier petitioned the city to be to be added on, assistance be added on when uh this summer, when the treatment plan is operational, so.
So.
Three, two, back in September or October.
The developer's attorney is here, too, if you want to give him a chance to speak, I'm not sure he wants to speak. Um, don't feel like you have to, but I just.
If I could, just a minute?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
My name is John Beatty, I'm with Dunlap and Seager, and uh as counsel, uh councillor Flaherty pointed out. Uh, been working with the city, appreciate the efforts of Mr. Palin and Mr. Flaherty and and the various versions that have gone back and forth here. Question appropriate from council about the status of the construction, there was quite a bit going through the summer. And got to the point where realized uh the original development agreement, city insisted needed to be amended, updated, we've worked through this since October, to be frank, and and kind of been stuck. Uh, the big issues, agree with Mr. Flaherty, that have been addressed through this, or accounting for those credits. Developer views this as a compromise, not a win, but you know, there's a lot of time that's passed from twenty twelve through today, you know, figuring out where everybody's at. So as you heard, developers agreed to this, I think, took a couple of various iterations, but credits are reflected in there. Security is accounted for, and it's just been really important, the uh. Building has has some some parts that have to get ordered in order to hit the sweet spot of construction this year, and that building permit. Nobody's really interested in ordering that until, and these are precast concrete panels, I think, for some of the the building itself that have have to get a little bit of a a runway to get those worked up. So that's been the pressure on getting this work through, glad to answer any questions, but uh this can be a really good thing for your community, and and everyone's looking forward to putting this up. Obviously, Ms. Osland, Ms. Melorn here tonight to uh answer other questions, but they're itching to get going.
Just to have it.
I any questions, happy to answer those separate, thank you.
Let that make a motion that we approve this development agreement.
Second then.
Yeah. Any other comments? We appreciate Mike and John's time, uh back and forth, but more importantly, we appreciate the compromise that was reached uh between the city and Tom, too, so we can move forward, so. There's no other comments, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That's agreed, too? So. Thank you for your patience, and uh.
Yep.
Water and sewer. Joe, you just. Uh, free update on contracts?
Yeah, sure, uh wastewater treatment facility contract one, um that stops contract, stop construction contract, stop has been uh. Uh periodically onsite, essentially doing punchless work and some some um. Minor startup planning work for the for the startup here coming in later, late March, so um. That's really what uh what's going on, and we've got some meetings coming up, planning for the startup and also the uh final MCC equipment startup here. Uh, we'll be meeting Friday uh to discuss that, as well as uh. Uh seeding of the facility, bringing that bacteria in to the facility that facilitates that uh treatment process. So we're we're gonna get some seed seed sludge from a couple other wastewater treatment facilities in the area, and that'll be facilitated by SOD, so. So, so we'll be talking about that on uh Friday a little bit, as well as some other issues, but by and large. Um, a little bit work, little bit of work has been going on, mostly punchless work, cleanup work, and and startup prep work. Uh, this for the startup, we do anticipate starting. In that March eighteenth timeframe, again, a little bit weather dependent, but um we seem to be on target for that. Uh, kind of continuing on with the update for the sanitary sewer collection system, that's the Fitzgerald's contract, contract two and three. Um, they also are onsite periodically doing punchless work, uh they directional drilled the remaining final two water services underneath Fifth Street Northwest. That was that rock drilling that needed to be done. Uh, so they did that, I think, uh, I think, weeks ago, or almost two weeks ago. And so that is complete, so all of the piping essentially is complete on the water side. The only sanitary sewer piping that remains to be completed is just tying over the community waste treatment systems to the um sanitary sewer collection. System and liftrations. Um, in addition to that, contractor is installing lift station control panels, uh they began this week. Uh, installing the biggest lift station, lift station one, that control panel is in, uh, they probably will be doing lift station.
Easy enough, too. Yeah, behind my house for River Park.
Yeah, so one A, uh and then the uh uh generator, the big generator at lift station one, supposed to be delivered here tomorrow or Thursday, so. Uh, and where it is, is that contractor is in possession with of at least one more lift station control panel, and the other ones aren't far behind. So I expect that they'll kind of continuing, continue to install the lift station control panels here. Uh, through the end of the month and probably into early March. Uh, and fingers crossed, we should be ready for the startup on or about eight, eighteen of March.
Oh, really? I didn't have a head.
Well, that's that's what we talked about, I think, back in November, we we sent out that mailing to all the residents. Um, so that's when, or just before then, the River Park, or Wood Hills, Cedar Woodlands, Community Waste Treatment Systems will start to get tied over along with Orno Coast Estates. Uh, just in advance or right during that period, so we have flow at the treatment facility at that point. So there's a lot of things that have to start to come together, um we've been trying to facilitate that with the contractors. But the biggest thing is that the lift station drill panels continue to come in, and um it was good to see that first one go in here. Um, and hopefully that continues based on um what the contractors are telling us, guardedly optimistic at that point.
Are all of the panels here, then?
No, that's what I'm saying, they installing them isn't the issue, it's physically getting them here, and I think the issue with their manufacturer is. Um, at least there's been some fairly significant delays in getting components, electric, the chronic components.
Good to hear about the generator, too, that, yeah, that's.
Yeah. So that is, I think, on a truck in route.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, and and the other list, the other generating, the big list day or the generator, the wastewater treatment plants here and operational, the portable one is here and operational. It's just that stationary one, other station one in River Park isn't here yet. So, so that's what's going in, and the contractor continues to do miscellaneous punchless work, whether that be, you know, putting up uh marker posts or adjusting um locate. Wire facilities or um pouring uh grout in in manholes and and different things like that. So they're making some progress with, you know, limited forces at this time of year, kind of knocking off those punchless items, which is good. Questions about either project, council?
No, and and it's, are we looking at the change orders, do with this, or?
Oh, I was just, yeah, we'll get to that. Um, I should also talk, jump down to item three, um, Stab sent us a letter on. Um, was it February first of the last day in January, uh and they, in that letter, asked us a couple things. They asked us if we would reduce retainage um from five percent to two percent. Um, and basically, they also asked that the city recognize that they're substantially complete as of January thirty first. And so we responded saying that this was a uh an issue that needed to be addressed, and I wanted to have a discussion with the council about that. Uh, we talked about it in the Sewer and Water Committee, um. Once substantial completion is reached, and substantial completion is defined in the contract, um then the contractor is. Or the owner is obligated to reduce the retainage that's held on the project to two times the value of work remaining, right? And so in this instance, um, they asked to reduce it to the retainage to two percent. In my opinion, that's a little bit um too aggressive, I would like to be just a little bit more conservative, I'm comfortable at two and a half percent. So taking the retention down from five percent to two and a half percent, um, mind you, it's still a lot of money, I mean, it's a twenty million dollar project. Um, it's still over half million dollars in retainage, right? Uh, and then the other thing is recognizing when substantial completion comes. I um talked about it with the Sewer and Water Committee, we had a nice long discussion. What we decided to do is we would recognize substantial completion once the lift station control panels uh showed up. The contractor for the wastewater treatment plant supplies. Um, the collection system contractor, the lift station control panels. We did that because we want one one supplier providing all of the brains of the equipment, because it all has to communicate, right? And so once Stab provides that to Fitzgerald, um, we would. And we start operation of that treatment facility, we essentially um. Consider that substantial completion, and that would be, you know, honored about March eighteenth, or whenever those lift station um control panels show up and. And uh um that is achieved, and so I think based on some correspondence that we've had, the contractors kind of begrudgingly um accepting of that. Um, obviously, they would like to have substantial completion achieved sooner rather than later. Um, you know, from their perspective, they have suppliers that have provided equipment, and that equipment's been sitting there in some cases since last May, let's say. Um, and it's just sitting there, and there's a two year warranty that starts after that substantial completion date starts to roll. And so they're anxious to have that start to roll, and um of course, they're anxious to get the retainage reduced, because it's it's real money. And their subs want to get paid, and they want to get paid, and so that's kind of the negotiated item here uh in item three. That's what Sewer Water Committee came up with, and I support that, I conveyed that to the contractor, and like I said, they're um. They're accepting of it.
Well, you're okay with the warranty then on that, because it's getting so close to when we're gonna start anyway, then it's like, what's what's thirty days when you're you're looking at that? So I just wanted to double check on that warranty, too, so.
Yeah, so if the lift state, last lift station control panel shows up on. May tenth, that's when I would consider that substantial completion being met, and that warrant, two year warranty start to roll.
Okay.
So that that's a set, you know, or whatever that date is, if it's May thirtieth, it's it's then two, uh we kind of feel like it. It puts, there's a little ins, little bit more incentive to keep things moving, and not that necessarily Stab has control of that, because it's. It's not like they're building the mag, the lift station control panels, but they can apply a little pressure.
Right.
Um, and that's all good from our perspective, and uh so that's kind of where we we landed on the response to their February first letter, and. That correspondence back and forth, and and the information, and the and the dialogue that we had with Sewer Sewer and Water. If that all makes sense, do you have questions on?
No, that was the only question that I kind of had, was was looking at that on the warranty, because I know we had talked about that many times, just to make sure, but it's getting to be so close off of that, that 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 makes sense.
And Jim, I should just clarify that there's a few pieces of equipment that we know that aren't gonna show up, you know, this switch here.
Right, until next fall, but.
So within my correspondence with them, I'm exempting that, that's that that warranty's not gonna start with the rest of the minute, right?
Yeah.
Um, but ninety nine percent of the project is gonna start whenever they get that last lift station control panel here.
Right.
So that's the clarification on that.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Alright, so with that, I'll make a motion that we approve. The two and a half percent retainage rate, and um you identify the substantial completion date, and the lift station panels have been received.
One second then.
And the one comment that uh Fitzgerald will get. Stop provides the panels, but it's up to Fitzpatrick, except contractor to do all the wiring. So we're still a mercy, not mercy, but it's still to Fitzgerald to do the actual wiring and the connection from the lift station to the uh pumps in the lift station, so. Yeah. Clarification. Any other comments? Then all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign? Approved? Give me your order number four.
Uh, so we do have a change order number four, again, um, a number of these items we've been talking about for some time. Uh, we did take a decent amount of time at the last Sewer and Water Committee, and we went through change order four. Change order four really deals with uh three items. Uh, the first item is um an electrical service for uh heat trace, which is essentially. Um, a mechanism of keeping the chemical feed lines to the SPR warm. Um, so that was included in the plan, but the electrical service to power the heat trace wasn't included in the plan, so the contractor didn't put a number on it. So as they went through this, that's one thing that came up. And uh that costs is about thirteen thousand three hundred and fifty eight dollars.
That's to put tracer lines, heat?
No.
The heat, the kind of lines?
No, it is basically to put an electric service to power the heat trace. The second item deals with actuated night valves, um is also an electrical item. Uh, the way we want to um power the electrical item or the electrical um actuated. The way we want to power the electrical item, or the electrical actuated valves, is through this MCC feeder bucket. It is a special type of electrical service. It can be served, temporarily wired now, but the way to do that for the long-term facility is through the MCCs. And to do that, we have to add a feeder bucket. That is another item that wasn't in the construction document, so the contractor didn't bid it accordingly. As we went through, and they were doing the final wiring and startups, we identified that item. We think you should do that. It's cost another six thousand dollars, but it makes sense long-term to do that. So that's item B.
No, how did it get missed on the drawings? Was, was that from the originals, or was that as it went through to STAB?
It is not in the construction drawing.
Okay, so it just, it just got missed?
It was one of those items that just got missed.
I mean, there are a lot of stuff that was in there, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that same for item C?
So item C is different. Item C is dealing with the garage door, the garage door opener in the pre-treatment building. The pre-treatment building is a, has a special space classification, and we need an explosion proof. All the equipment in there is explosion proof. So if you look at the lights, the light switches, the equipment, it's all, yeah, right, explosion proof. While the door opener wasn't explosion proof. And so as we looked at that, that's one of the items that was identified as something that we, we need to change out and put an explosion-proof door opener. Now, they're not your typical door opener that's in your garage door. And so, we talked to the contractor. A sixty-nine-hundred-dollar garage door opener seems like it's a lot, and it is. But it is, it is different than what you normally look at. And so, that cost is to change that out. They are typically a higher-quality facility too, and, and it is encased in explosion-proof, so.
Will they credit us, or?
We have a small credit in that, but it's an amount, I think it's like two hundred and fifty bucks.
Oh, really?
So this one, this one, this way the door won't open so quick.
So that's a, that's a scoop, and that one is sixty, sixty-nine-hundred dollars. So if you add those three up, the total is twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. If you add that to the total, the previous change orders totaled about a hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and one dollars, plus the twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars is the total change orders to date, which is about one percent of the total contract.
Okay, so how are we, we bidding with that? Do we have enough for a cushion that we have today?
Our contingency was about two and a half percent, and we're at about one. So we're in good shape.
We're, okay, I just wanted to ask that too.
Oh, that's important.
We're getting close to it, essentially.
Yeah, so we're, we're in good shape. So, that's the recommendation that the council approved, approved, approved these. I may want to do a further second.
Any other questions? Sign out all those in favor, signify if everybody's saying aye. Oh, some sign? My next item is just an update. At our last water and sewer meeting, we've been talking about this for a couple of meetings now. We're trying to gather some facts, but we are looking at a second water meter. I'll bring a second water meter to residents for those that have irrigation. Right now, it's your water rate that's gonna determine your sewer rate. So for those problems, residents that use water for irrigation, or for basically other purposes in, in the house, this is an opportunity for them to buy a second water meter. And it's gonna keep your sewer rate and the water used for the house essentially at one rate, and this other water meter, it can either be hooked in series or parallel. We just have to know that distinguishing, distinguishing how it's applied. So either the software can subtract it or add it, or stand alone. So the water meter is similar to the one they have right now, with an RF unit on it. And it's cell, I should say, it's cell, the new ones are cell, cellular now. So, Dylan Christoperson is a supervisor and a math wizard, so he's put together some information this past week, and we'll review at the March Water and Sewer Meeting. But we're trying to determine how many extra water meters we need to order. And as a standard deviation, looking at some of those higher users could be between seventy and a hundred and twenty users that would be, could be valued for them to order and have it installed, because it does, the payback is gonna be like one or two, maybe three years at the most. And it's gonna help their sewer rates, and also help the city so we can keep track of how much water is going in, but also for the sewer too, so. We haven't determined a cost yet, but it'd be something a little bit less than our current four hundred and fifty dollars. But we think it's gonna be a big advantage until we get a, come back at the March meeting with the board definitive program of how we're gonna go about offering this. And it's gonna be, of course, it'd be installed with the water permit and everything, but it's really gonna be a, a plus to our residents, and the payback is gonna be pretty quick, so. That's all I have to say about that for now, but we'll hear more in March.
And these second meters, were they for gardening, or were they for?
It's gonna be for gardening, if you need a lot of water for gardening, just whatever you're not using inside the house. If you want to differentiate that from your water bill, or your sewer bill.
Yeah, it's just to ensure that your sewer bill is accurate. So it deducts water that doesn't go into the sewer. So if it's irrigation, if it's, you know, watering your garden, whatever, if you have a separate meter for that use, it's essentially deducting that from your watered meter. And so, you don't pay sewer on, on that.
So actually, it's giving, it's giving the city an accurate count, what's going to be disclosed.
Right.
Yep.
A lot of cities offer it too, so. All right, next item is an update on the well sealing program. This is offered by the SoCal Soil and Water Conservation. In February, the city was, I should say, Soil Water Conservation was able to obtain a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar grant that residents can work directly with the county for sealing their well up. It's not through the city, it's all administered by the city council or city.
SWCD.
County Soil and Water Conservation is responsible. So if you do, so they have a record of whose wells are out there that need to be sealed off. And so there'll be direct communications from the county to those individuals. Just like the current system today was when we installed water in two thousand and nine, and all of those wells had to be sealed off, they had to get it permitted, so. It's just that this is a substantial grant to help with that sealing of the well. And we think it's probably covering eighty percent.
With no maximum.
No maximum.
So, within the guidance document that we provided, we knew that this program existed. We thought they'd pay up to half with like a fourteen-hundred-dollar max. Well, now they're gonna pay seventy-five, eighty percent, because they got more money. And we don't have a maximum grant that they'll award. And so that, it is really a good thing for residents. And I strongly encourage people, if, if you have, are getting a water service, you have a well to abandon, contact SWCD, all the contact informations in that guidance document, take advantage of the grants.
Yeah, if I remember right, in two thousand and ten, or eleven, they did the same thing, but it was capped at like fifteen hundred marks or something.
Right, and, and this time there isn't a cap, because they've got a little bit more funding, which is fabulous.
There's about eighty wells, I think, something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
They have to be sealed, so. All right, next item is another update, that's the Water and Sewer Committee one. This is, we know that the treatment plant is gonna start operation here in a couple of months, so people with gravity sewers, there will be, Joe will be putting a letter out to those people that have a gravity sewer that will need to be connected within a year. And so with that, there could be a lot of construction on private, almost from the curb stop to the house. And so, we also have gold rush planned for the week, the sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth of August. So, we're, we'll have this one more discussion in our March meeting, but we'd like to ask the residents if, just because of all the extra traffic going through the one-way, especially downtown here, if they would just hold off on any construction during that time because of the extra traffic. We'd like to, we can't, we can request that, we can't enforce it, we can request it that, that construction in their yards, wherever connecting is, is put on hold during those days, or work towards, with their contractor trying to be done, or starting after, whatever the case may be, so. Any comments or questions there? Next item we could care of. Last item is an action item, it's in your packet, a letter from Joe regarding city's permission to accept Minnesota Department of Health technical assistance offered to complete lead service line inventory. And Joe, have you done this before in other cities?
We are doing it in lots of cities. There is a huge initiative by EPA and supported by Minnesota Department of Health to identify and eliminate lead services, lead water services, from a health perspective. And so, the health department has here some grant funding, and they've identified qualified contractors to provide technical assistance to cities to identify lead services within their community, both on the public side and on the private side. There are grant dollars that are being administered through the health department to facilitate this. The mandate is that this lead service line inventory be complete by October of twenty-four. Last July, the city staff on my recommendation completed a grant application and applied for technical assistance to complete this inventory, and they were successful. And so, we got notified by the health department that we're in line to do this, and they want me to confirm with the council that yes, indeed, we want to accept essentially free technical assistance and complete this inventory.
You have any idea how much lead pipes, or how many lead pipes, or the amount that's here in the city?
Well, anything constructed bef, or, or anything constructed after nineteen eighty-six would be exempt. So that's a good chunk of the city, right? But essentially downtown, on the west side of the, on the east side of the city, north and south of the bridge, there are candidate homes. And although we know that the new system is all lead-free, it's all copper and PVC, on the private side, what used to go from the well to the home, we don't know. And so some of that could be lead. And so, we'll review the limited information that is available to us. We might end up going door-to-door and documenting what's there in the homes.
Is, is there the chance, Joe, that in two thousand and ten, when they were installing water generators and stuff, that they already knew that they took, took a?
I don't think so.
Paid, paid attention at that point?
Keith and I, or Kane and I talked about that last week, and we don't, we're not aware of any records that were kept, unfortunately. We'll do a little bit more digging, but I don't think that exists. And so, that additional, that work is gonna have to be done. Fortunately, there are grant funds to do this. The city doesn't have to do anything. The contract, essentially, MPCA will pay us to do it for you, with Kane's help. We'll need public works staff to kind of facilitate this. But it's a good news, good thing for the community, it's good for the city, and.
What about the building here?
It's a good example, right?
I mean, gotta ask, you know?
No, really looking, I, I wouldn't, my dollar, bottom dollar, that it's not.
I'd bet it's not.
Yeah, so, and actually, anything that's galvanized or lead, galvanized counts as lead now.
Okay, it's galvanized, and.
So, there are, you know, there, there's gonna be some.
They're gonna be there.
So.
So what happens if they do find something in the ground?
So, basically, the first step in the process is to inventory them. And then there, there will be some correspondence of those property owners that say, you know, yes, you, you, you've been unidentified as having lead service, or there are gonna be some that, you know, are gonna be inconclusive. For example, if, if, if I call you and I knock on your door and you don't answer, I, I just can't figure that out. So you'll, you, you would go down as inconclusive then. And there'll be a follow-up on that. But basically, EPA and health department, there's gonna be, and is a huge push to fund these lead service replacement projects. And so ultimately, they, there probably will be some construction dollars. And I have no idea how that's gonna all be rolled out. We're in only the first phase, and that's kind of what I can talk about. But I do know that it's a huge initiative, and there's federal money behind it, and things are gonna happen.
So is that to the house, or are we talking in the house?
To the house. So, yeah, there's really two sides of the service, from the curbs, you know, from the water main to the curb stop, that's, that's one side. That's the city side. And then there's from the curb stop to the house.
Basically, to the, basically to the meter.
Yeah.
Yeah, to the meter, and then inside.
Inside on your, your dime.
Yeah.
And that's big.
So fortunately, smaller cities are getting the grant funding, bigger cities are just expected to pay it. So, we're fortunate to get some grant.
What, to pay, to, to pay for the study, or to?
Pay for the inventory, yeah.
Take the inventory.
Yeah, do the, do the inventory, and you know, if you had thousands of services, well, unless your records are really good, that's a big lift.
I'll make a motion, we have the Department of Health, give them permission to do this study survey.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so you're really accepting the technical assistance.
Right, right, exactly.
Okay, all those in favor? Sign if everybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Those? They've signed, okay, that's approved. Planning and zoning. Little updates here. One is the schoolhouse events, it's the historic event center over across the river on the south side. In the right of way, IP and Z, I guess, with that, for discussion like that.
Yeah, what we did is, we figured that it wasn't necessarily a part of a coast, but more a part of an ordinance that we were looking at. And so, they turned around and said it should probably go to council. And, and that, and, and so, I mean, I, I really, I feel bad for, for the schoolhouse, and all that they've invested on trying to do that for the event center, and then all of a sudden run into the situation that they had. Paul Janetto was, was here at the last planning and zoning, and he made a comment that when they had turned around and gave a variance to be able to start doing that work, work parking, that the owner of that property had gotten along with it and said it would be okay to park on that, that property. And from what I understand, it was a verbal commitment and, and not a written commitment of what was going on, so. We're in a, a situation that, you know, how can we make this good for both parties that are involved? And then make it workable. And, and looking with, with the rower right of way, one of the, the things that might work is if you turned around and, and put in Paul Gaimo with a post, that there would be as, as the three posts that there are marking that, that property, that, that triangle, and have it where it's just a. And have it where it's just at ground level. And and then when they were having an event, they could turn around and and put another post in to raise that up. And put like um a better something around there saying this is where the right of way is. You know, that that might help for for that particular part and 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 respect. That property that there is and 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 still try to make it workable also for the school. Um the other thing that there was that that I was thinking about too is is once the sewer is hooked up. The drain field that you have that's there off to the would be the west side of the.
Right, right.
Okay, it's gonna be able to be make that in into parking, whether you do it on the grass or or. Whether you put parking in there, but I think that that's gonna make that part of it accessible. And then they've got the the van too to to run, which they've been doing up to the Presbyterian church. You know, and and so I'm just trying to look. And if you look at the other one, we've got First Avenue Southeast. You you've got the right of way that's on that. I just, I don't know how many cars it's gonna be that that you're looking at. Um that they need for parking. I I don't have that number, but um that's an idea that we came up with.
So um in my conversations with the owner, um they were parking parallel along the street. Park, I'm assuming his park was on the grass park, it was on the road, but it was a parallel parking. Um and then one of them, they tried diagonal parking and I'm sure I don't, I don't believe they went beyond the right of way, but. Parking more on the grass is what caused the frustration from the owner of the property to um cause a scene, so that's their. I know Jesse is trying to work with the owner of the property, but um.
Well, since they made that agreement, I think Pete was still alive, the husband up there in that place. That's probably who they talked to, because they started doing their development, like they started refurbishing that building like two thousand and nineteen.
Right.
And.
Uh, schoolhouse.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they've been working that that long and.
Right.
And he's passed away since.
Yes.
The guy, it's Kitty Carter.
Yeah.
So, uh, but keep in mind that First Avenue Southeast, that's a hundred foot wide street.
Yeah.
And it goes, you know, I know it, I know it's steep going to the north, but going to the south, that's. There's plenty of room there and nobody uses that except for this one house. Uses it for a driveway to come through up into the proximity. The other place accesses off of Third Street.
There were suggestions to the owner of the triangle to. We talked to the lady a couple of different times to vacate, put a vacate and just pick up half of that street with the vacation too, you know, just to so. It's not a street anymore, but that's never, they've never applied for the, for the evacuation.
Which street you tell, oh, the one going to.
Uh, First Avenue Southeast.
Right.
To apply for vacation, which direction?
Uh, north and south, just.
Towards the river. So I think good, they kept that open, because that's there's a, there's a sewer line and water line running across, right there, Joe? At the river.
There is a water line.
Yeah, the water line runs down under the river on that road, so that's access for for utilities.
Yeah, roads like that, we, in the past, we've done one up by the Presbyterian Church. We keep it, we maintain a utility easement down through the middle of the two.
No, I just, I'd like to know the number of cars that that really created the issue and. I haven't had a chance to to try to get ahold of the sheriff and what his comments were either, when I guess that he came out and. There was an issue at that time, from what my understanding is.
Yes, there was a motion.
You know, and and just to try to to find out how many, how many cars are were, you know, the actual parts.
Well, well.
Is there a way, Joe, that, is there a way, Joe, that since we've put in, just put it recently, put in utilities, that we'd be able to mark those three spots? Without.
Good.
Without too much.
I mean, without, if if you wanna full fledged. Lancer rate done, that's different. If you want us to go set out the coordinates that we have for it, that's very other different.
I think that'd be a simple and try.
Wouldn't be within this far.
Be fair to, be fair to both sides to know where the.
Yeah, that's what you wanna try to do, absolutely.
You want me to do that?
I think a lot of it is just the communication between the owner and the property owner of the schoolhouse to. Saw a big portion of the grass being used, you know, for parking and that was objectionable to the property owner of the triangle, the owner. If there's a way we could. Where with Jesse and also with the owner of the property, so here's the right. Try and work out some type of arrangement that maybe keep the parallel parking for some, but not the diagonal, so we don't go on the grass so much, but keep with the parallel. And keep up the grass as much as possible, so.
Yeah, and I and again, I don't think that they'd looked at that drain field too at that time, that that's gonna give them some extra parking.
That's gonna go away, of course.
That way, that's why they do.
Well, um, I just wanted to bring it, you guys wanted to bring it to attention for P and Z.
Absolutely.
That's been my mantra and that's why I provided this draw, because it's gonna help tell the story even better. Next item is a. P and Z is looking at the request for. Paid position to take right post meeting minutes.
So I have a suggestion on that one. Um I think we can talk about it in the personnel, when the personnel item comes up. Instead of having a separate paid position to do that, look at that part time position. And see if they would want a couple of extra hours to do this, instead of just hiring another person to do this.
I, you know, this is water, you know, the parks chairman, the water and sewer chairman. And the gold rush chair for some time did their own minutes too. Paul did his own minutes. And with seven committee members on that committee, seems like someone would be willing to step up and take minutes, mainly for the reason, the main reason I say that is just. If you get into the P and Z minutes, and you all know it already, is that the finding of facts has to be pretty exact. And to have anybody else come into the committee meeting that's not on the committee, I think you're asking. Um a lot of it to make those commissions or to make, take those meeting minutes.
You mean, you mean if we're, you mean if we're paying somebody to do that, they don't have to pay attention?
I'm just saying that there's plenty of members on the P and Z that should be able to take minutes.
I understand that, but but you're saying somebody, you're saying, but you, what you just said, that somebody from the outside wouldn't pay attention enough to do, get it, get the minutes right.
I guess you could say that, you know. I don't think we should be having our part time administrative assistant doing it either. That's not what you applied the job for.
Is that something?
For hours.
It's all recorded, right?
Zoom, yeah.
So can somebody go over the recordings and make the minutes?
Committee members can do that too.
Right. So they wouldn't necessarily have to be at the meeting.
It'd be nice if we were, but yeah.
They have to.
No, no, yeah.
All of our committees have personnel on them and we. Every committee takes care of their own minutes and I don't see why P and Z should be any different, in my opinion.
I think there's a lot going on at P and Z too.
Yeah, the last time that there was for the secretary head last year, um she was taking. Notes that she wasn't able to participate that much in what was really going on and there's. There's a lot that moves and trying to keep track of that, which is is where the the problem came in, you know, so.
Well, then there was a discussion of how to get the minutes up online. There's a lot of that going, a lot of that discussion is taking place too.
And then we tried to do it as a draft and then from the draft to the to the final, it says.
The draft, so everybody could see it sooner, but. It's still need to be finalized and taken down and redone.
We have nothing in the budget either, really.
Well, we, P and Z's got a budget.
P and Z's got a budget.
Do you, so what you're doing is finding the fact, are you still just putting those in the minutes only or are you doing it? You know, you have Phil, he's still creating like a resolution to recommend approval of whatever, you know, variance conditioning is permanent, whatever. And then he makes the findings and you just adopt his document? Or are you actually going through?
Phil's making the findings. Yeah, Phil's putting all that together. The person who's taking minutes is.
So the person taking, and if you're just adopting, you know, making a motion to adopt what Phil did.
Right.
You don't need to write, write the findings in there, he's already written them and you're just referencing the document, that's. Now, granted, you might change him sometime. You might say, well, I don't like what Phil did on number three B. You know, I make a motion to approve Phil's uh resolution.
Ending change.
With one change, striking three B, you know, and then, but then you have to write that in the minutes, but that's just one sentence.
Recording.
So in the old days, you were making, you know, I've made a strong advice to do findings in the minutes anymore, because it's just you can't. Nobody could take those minutes accurately.
Yeah, there's so much, yeah.
Yeah, so just make sure you're doing that if you can, you know, and um and that's what Phil was for, apparently he is doing that, so. That's my one, when you said, when you said that Ryland, I just. Okay.
The finding impacts for the minutes on the resolutions, I think.
Okay, but you're just referencing those documents that are already in the packet, you know. Planning Commission Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero one, move to approve or move to approve with the striking of item three B. And then that's just one sentence in the minutes. That's what it's, the way I think it should be done, one, one sentence. Um I think there's a lot of other things in that committee too, though, that. You know, not necessarily making findings a fact, but just discussion, right? But that, that's gotta be in that, so.
I I say we have the budget. It's worth having someone do it, because there's nobody that. We put it out there, nobody wants it. And the current person, as I understand it, was too much.
Well, you gotta.
And I'm not doing it. I'll just say that right now, I'm not doing it. I got a full time job.
But you have to do minutes too, you can't.
Yeah. And we have, that's why I say we have the budget. I don't know what to do it, but it needs to be done.
How long does it take to do the minutes?
Depends upon how long the meeting is.
We've had some meetings for.
Four hours.
Four hours.
So four hours a month.
Well, I'm just saying it's usually just one meeting a month, okay, and then. Normally four hours is the longest that it's it's gone. I think we never got out past ten thirty at night, so I think we were, you know, that.
We could, we could check with Colleen what it normally took her to do the minutes.
Yeah. Try to come up with.
I would say it's, it's probably a few hours, couple of hours at least.
Right.
You know?
I guess, from my perspective, I think that's just all part of being the chair is to take minutes. Paul did it, I've done it, Katie does it, all of our chairman do it. I don't see where P and Z would be any different as far as a chair position to do it. If you do rely on the um the Zoom video. I'm on your own, you know, along with your personal notes too, but that's.
And I think prior, the prior city administrator. Well, I don't, I won't say was doing it. A few times. He had done that. That was her task.
Well, maybe she should, Shirley should hand Ryland the minutes for tonight and let him take over.
There you go.
No suggestion, no comment.
I think it's in the.
I don't see why we shouldn't.
Yeah.
I take it back to P and Z and discuss it, but I think it's a, a chair position duty, in my opinion.
I think we've already discussed it. We have.
P and Z just.
We've gone around and around.
Shirley says, yeah, find somebody to do it.
Yeah.
P and Z's had more than one discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, I, seriously, I would make a motion that we just. At least offer it to that part time person. If they don't wanna do it, then let's, we gotta find something. Some alternative.
My two cents, can I add that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would not be in favor. Um we've promised Renee help for a long time. We are down to one. In my, my time that I come in, one person in that office. She is so far behind. Um that you can't, if if you promise to hire somebody to help her, they can't be doing planning commission minutes. There isn't going to be time. Then I think you need to go to that next suggestion that we talked about is hiring two time, two full time, or part time people.
So.
And have them do the minutes.
Yeah, and and I'm totally with you. And that's why I said it it would be an addition to that.
Right.
So it's those, I would, that's why I said I'd do five extra hours and say, this is it, this is for that.
The city is really behind in all of their minutes right now.
Yeah.
And so it's kind of like, we still don't have the council minutes done and there's just. You know, we're just trying to keep up with meetings we have going right now, but we have to go back and transcribe those and they take a long time.
Yeah, minutes are.
Yeah, they're.
Drilling.
They are, they're drilling.
And they have to be accurate.
They're accurate and then we bring them here and then there's lots of corrections because you, you know, remember something differently than what we saw on the tape and so, yeah, they are.
So I I stand with that. I make a motion that we make the offer to the part time person for five hours. If they would wanna do it, if they won't, if they don't wanna do it.
Where it's off premises, that if they could do radio that way, so it wouldn't take away from anything with Renee. On what's going on here, so it would be, and you know, be uninterrupted of what's going on and and that with that, so it would be over and above. Isolated that it wouldn't, wouldn't be a part of anything here.
Yeah, and my thought is with that person. They're not coming in blind to the city. They'll, they'll know, they'll have the landscape of what's going on with the city once they get going. That's my thought.
So if you offer to that person, she says, and he or she says, no, I don't want it, then are we gonna lose an administrative assistant then altogether?
Then what?
Are we gonna lose administrative assistants then?
No.
Or you find some other way of doing it?
We have to find some other way. I, I'm just saying, I, my motion was just to offer it to that part time admin assistant.
In addition to the twenty.
In addition to their.
And not on premises, that nothing gets done on premises.
They they could do it on premise, but as long as they're out of their time.
Yeah.
Because they're, they'll have set hours.
But I don't wanna take anything away from Renee, who needs to have that with what they're not.
I mean, they can still do it on premise, but they'll have set hours, so it'd have to be outside of those set hours.
Well, Renee, well, the, it's set already for the person to take that job for for twenty hours to help Renee. Five additional hours would be to deal with council minutes, whatever. You have to take to fulfill that duty.
Because let's just say, it would, it would be half, half day hours or, you know, half a day, however, it's it's put together, all of it's configured. They just know that on Friday, they're gonna work extra or Tuesday and Wednesday, whatever. I mean, that's something to work on. It'd be outside of that time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? All those in favor, sign if you're probably saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, aye. That's approved. Next item is a manufactured mobile home on forty five Third Street Southeast.
Southwest.
Actually, southeast.
It is southeast, okay, so it's down. Uh in reviewing this and um I've had some pretty extensive conversations. Uh, in reviewing this, and, um, I've had, uh, some pretty extensive conversations with, with Tom at CMS and, and emails that have gone back and forth that, that I've been able to come up with. The only place that there should be, uh, a manufactured mobile home is in a manufactured mobile home park. Not a standalone manufactured mobile home, single-wide, um, in, in, in town. Um, so, um, it was approved by the prior administrator, um, in which case I think that, um, in retrospect should have been brought to P and Z to take a look at it, and I think we could have, you know, spearheaded or, or, or stopped an issue that was going on. So we're in a situation now where, um, that, um, single-wide mobile home should not be out there, and it goes under code one-five-one dash, uh, one-five-one point two oh eight. Yeah, we, uh, discussed it at, uh, P and Z and, uh, the vote was, yeah, it shouldn't be there, so it came to the council. And so I'm wondering if it might be advisory to have Mike write a letter to the homeowner up there and let him know that he's not in compliance and it's not with code.
So I've looked at this, remember Renee and Shirley asked me to look at, but I only did it today, so I don't have much time into it. What's the ordinance here?
One-one-one-five-one point two oh eight.
Look at that quick. One-five-one point two oh eight, that's in the Flintline District in.
Well, that's the only thing, if you look at that, or if it goes back to, I mean, that's the main one that, that shows. Although, yeah, everything refers back to the one-five-one point two oh eight. Another one is one-five-one point two-six-two is another one.
Yeah, I need to review this. So there is a state statute that basically says you can't have zoning regulations that prohibit manufactured homes.
This is, this is a manufactured mobile home.
Well, that's.
There's, there's a difference between that, and I, and I'm in agreement with a manufactured home. You know, when it, when it comes to that, because they are there, but a manufactured home is put on a foundation. This was brought in on axles and, and driven up there and put in that way, okay, which was not what's considered to be a manufactured home. It's, on, on the blueprints that there are in the office, it's stated as a manufactured mobile home.
Yeah, they, I mean, they sent to it. They sent me their application, I've looked at that, I mean, I haven't looked at everything here. Um, so their application says manufactured, kind of scribbled, manufactured home, is what they say. And so that was one of my main questions is, what is it?
Yeah, but if you look at the blueprint that they gave, that's inside the same folder, it's identified as a manufactured mobile home. Okay, and then if you go down here to number two, and the one-five-one-two oh eight, new and, and replacement manufactured home in existing manufactured home parks must meet subdivision one-five-one-two-six-two, point two-six-two. Again, it, it goes back. My concern, you know, is, is setting a precedence that there is in Orinoco that you're able to have single-wide mobile homes throughout the city, and I don't think that that's what we want whatsoever for our zoning or anything that's associated with that.
Right.
And again, I make a distinction between a manufactured home and a manufactured mobile home, which is on the blueprint.
Right, so the statute talks about this, so here's what it says. So it says, um, no regulation may prohibit earth-sheltered construction defined by a statute, relocated residential buildings, manufactured homes built in conformance with sections three-two-seven-point-three-one to three-two-seven-point-three-five. So that's what I'm looking at. Is it one of those things? I didn't have enough information to know. I still don't have enough information.
Yeah, no, and if, if you look at, at what Tom had said, then, um.
Yeah, I don't have, they asked me to look at it, and they said, here's what I have. We got the certificate of occupancy that was issued. I've got the application form, and then some emails, and one of the emails, it says, buried in one of the emails, I think it was from Sunny, it says, from this owner, that they were planning on temporarily putting it on, they didn't say pillars, I think it's on pillars now, according to Ryland, but.
But it's not.
But they said they were gonna put it on concrete.
But there is nothing that there is, and when they, they did, took out the building permit that says that. There is nothing that's in there that says temporary or anything.
No, I agree with that.
And also, if that's what they got for the building permit, then you've gotta go with what they pulled for the building permit.
And Phil even said that.
Oh, yeah, Phil, we went over this with Phil, and Phil says, just bypass council and, and turn around and talk to the sheriff and have him, and it's like, no, I don't think that that's the right way to do it.
I talked to Phil today about it, he was not, he didn't know, he didn't give me a whole lot, to be honest.
Because we, you, it's, if you go to when we were discussing it, you'll see that in our P and Z.
Yeah.
On the discussion that was done with everything with Phil, and he says, you're absolutely right. It should not have been there.
Yeah, I agree with, with that. We, I think the steps that I'm gonna take, if you want me to write a letter, is number one, to determine what happened here, like, basically what happened, and determine, you know, first determine, you know, what zoning district, what zoning district is that in?
B one. First time on B, it's R one.
So R one?
Yes.
So the ordinance you just said, is that an R, is that related to the R one?
R one. Here, why don't you, why don't you pass that down so he can see Tom's comment?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Oh, you, you got, and, and Tom had more, that's, that's the one that's at the bottom, there it goes.
Yeah.
Uh, Tom is the one that's the owner of CMS.
And the dwelling, the definition of a dwelling, it talks about being non-mobile.
I read this, so I read this, so he's not referencing the ordinance.
No, no, he's referencing the same thing, and, and if you go through some of the other things that he had, he was looking at this right away, saying it's not right. And, and, um, if you look at, at some of the prior administrators' comments, um, it was like, I'm really busy, I just finished Gold Rush, I'm swamped, okay, you, you saw that, and so it was like, okay, fine, and, and that's where I, again, I'm concerned.
Yeah.
About the precedence that's being sent here in the city.
Right, before I send a letter, I'm concerned about making sure that I know what's going on.
Sure. Oh, no, a- a- absolutely, that's why I wanted to bring it up here to.
So my view of this, all I've looked at is that definition, because that's what this guy said, the building official, single-family dwellings. A dwelling is defined as any house or building or portion thereof which was constructed to be non-mobile. And then.
To be non-mobile.
Yeah, to be non-mobile, and so there's a couple of ways to read that, and I think one of them would conflict with state statute, and one of them wouldn't conflict with state statute. And so, that's odd language, and so.
I, I, again, I just, I wanna bring this up, that, that we can put it on and, and continue the conversation.
Well, I need to, if you want me to write a letter, I need to review the facts and determine, and then, so then, if I determine that, you know, what Phil told me today was, well, look, you know, probably based on that language I just read, it shouldn't be allowed. But he also said that we granted a certificate of occupancy and approved a building permit, so, but, you know, so it's, it's a mess, it's a mess.
Yeah, he also turned around, and if you go back and take a look at what he said, he says, regardless, if there was, uh, uh, it shouldn't have been issued, and it was a mistake that happened in City Hall, that's not a reason to keep it there, and so.
Generally agree with that, and here's why, generally, not always. But generally speaking, I think that applicants are presumed to know the rules, and they have to understand that one city staff person sending an email, and I don't even think, I've seen no email that approved this, by the way.
No.
I can find none, so, at least what, what's been sent to me, but one city staff person with a phone call saying you can do something is not the, the end of it, and so, but what Phil was saying was, he's not sure about the other provisions and code. And, you know, my concern is that I know that state statute, that there is a lot of protections for manufactured homes, and your ordinance could be construed to, to conflict with the statute, the way that this is written. It's an odd, it's linking the, the definition of a dwelling to the type of construction, which is bizarre to me. So why are we linking what a dwelling is to, you know, constructed to be non-mobile? I mean, does that mean that your ordinance is outlawing manufactured homes in their entirety? Because to me, all manufactured homes are constructed to be non-mobile.
Or, or does it say? Because you could move that one from one trailer court to another.
Yeah, because it's got axles underneath it, okay.
Then I'll bring up the argument though, too. Yeah, and I'll bring up the argument, we, we put this tiny home ordinance together, that's an all-in void based on what you're saying.
Well, no.
So I could put one of those anywhere I wanted, based on that.
That was a P U D. We, we said those, so if you're in a planned unit development, you could, you have to be in a planned unit development. This is just the R one district.
But this one also turns around and says it's supposed to be in a manufactured mobile home park, okay, in which case we don't have any manufactured mobile home parks in Orinoco, we do in Orinoco Estates.
Right.
But that's not the city limits.
My view of the state law, though, is that you cannot prohibit even notwithstanding parks in the R, your R one district, you cannot prohibit, have an ordinance that prohibits manufactured homes.
No, and I'm not, and, and I'm, and I'm not saying that. There's a, there's a difference that there is between manufactured homes, so if you, I, I saved a paper that there was with Pine Island, and they were putting one in, okay, and it's up on top of the bio cabinet in there. And when you look at it, it comes on a flatbed, and they bring in a crane, and the crane lifts it up and puts it on a foundation. So, okay, and that is what I consider to be a manufactured home, not one that comes on axles with tires underneath, that you could.
So, why, and that's the second way to read this. So this is, the, the one way to read it is, all manufactured homes are mobile. By the way, any home is mobile. I mean, if you have a, a brick home on a foundation, you can pay something to move it.
Yeah.
They move it, you can move anything, that's why your ordinance doesn't make a lot of.
Well, it's, and, and, and again, we're, we're, we're in the middle of rewriting all the ordinances. The key that, like I said, the main thing that I'm looking at is not to set a precedence that there is inside the city, because it's gonna create more issues.
And I think what, the way, other way to read this is constructed to be non-mobile, which, which would be half of the manufactured homes are constructed to be mobile, and half are constructed to be non-mobile, and what that really, I think the intent of this is clear. It's not about how it's manufactured or constructed, it's about how it's affixed to the land.
Yeah.
That's the better way to read it, but it isn't real clear. I mean, that, you could do that. Most cities have that ordinance. You guys don't.
Well, no, and, and again, we're, we're, we're changing it, but my thing is to make sure it doesn't happen in between.
Yeah.
And if we don't bring this up now, then shame on us for not bringing it up.
Well, I, I think it's worth having me look at it.
Okay.
And then, because, but the other thing with, I was gonna bring up is, I read all these emails, and I said, well, Sunny had brought this up to me months ago, and she said, well, their plan is to move it to a foundation. So is it your view that if they pick that up, lay concrete, and put it down on the concrete, that would be acceptable?
Well, again, they don't have a, a, a building permit to do that, okay, and so if you do that, then they're gonna have to go in and look for a variance, and, well.
But it's still, well, that's what I'm asking.
A mobile home.
It's still, yeah, still a mobile home. Well, yeah, you're right, okay, no matter.
Asking, is there a way they can make that home non-mobile?
I, not the way I look at it with, with what's there, so.
All right, I'll take a look. I don't know, maybe.
And honestly, thi- this is a good example where these things need to come through P and Z. You know, P and Z needs to be able to look at these things.
We would have stopped it right there at that point, saying, no, it doesn't fit, and it would not have been an issue with those people.
So the CMS guy's email, I didn't take it to mean he was taking a position. I took it to mean, what does your, how do you interpret your code to read legit, like, I read this to me, well, you can read it either way, how do you read it?
And then Tom was saying too, he said, he raised the plagues that there were that, that this was not right from the very start. That's why he was looking at it, and he was saying, eh, there's something, then evidently the prior administrator said, okay, here's your building permit, and so off it went once they had it, and, you know, I guess they were a little bit pushy too, is that the right word for it?
Well.
Renee, yeah, so.
That's a theme in Orinoco, though, is a lot of people who want things are pushy, and then do whatever they want, because they're the ones.
Oh, I know.
So as you look at this bike, I think too, um, we, um, you know, we need to look at the precedent too, because we have a couple of double lines. We don't know if they're mobile or manufactured upon North Avenue, South, Ninth Avenue Northwest too, so.
I think it really does boil, I mean, it's an interesting issue. I spent an hour on it trying to figure it out, but it's not an easy figure out. I think it really relies on the facts. So send me everything you've got, because they've sent me what they have, but they weren't around. They, I think Shirley's done her best to.
Oh, no, I think she, she's been great, and, and again, looking through and seeing the prints that there were, and the way it's identified on that clearly puts that as being a manufactured mobile home. I mean, that's, that's the drawings for the blueprint, so.
Yeah, I think.
There are a couple of files here on that that we've come up with now that we found. So do you want both of those files combined, and we just give it to you, or do you want us to make copies of everything and then?
Well, I mean, I'd like to understand. I mean, I might just call the CMS guy and ask him, might be easier. Because I called Phil today to try to do that, but Phil basically said he didn't think it was allowed. He didn't think that the, the thing was allowed, but I, he recognized the fact that the statute exists and kinda just, you know. It wasn't a hundred percent when he put it that way, I guess.
I'm not sure, when did this paper, is that in that file, or is that something?
No, I got this.
Yeah, that, that's.
We don't have that.
I, I think.
Renee's got that, don't you?
Yeah, Renee sent all this.
The building inspector actually dealt with, and had, there's a lot of paperwork in the file from the building inspector.
Yeah, I don't need to be gritty, I just, I kinda need to know, like Jim's saying, I think the main thing is, is it, is it a mobile home, or is it just a manufactured home? If it's a manufactured home, they can probably add it.
No, and if, if it was that, I wouldn't be doing anything if it was, okay, I'm just, you know, this is just a concern for the city.
I'm good, but here's my thing, is I'm not, I need to make sure that we're right before I start, okay, talking off of the letter.
That's great.
Yeah, so, and I appreciate that, and, and doing the research off of it, I think it's worth it.
Did Tom follow our codes to, before he approved that?
Well, no, it, it was done through, what's the gentleman's name that's on the bottom of it? Or Ryan, okay, but Ryan turned around and talked to Tom, and that's why you see Tom at the, the top part of that. Okay, on, on the correspondence, so it was his guy that was looking at stuff.
So here's what he said, his last sentence, and this is already, please advise how the city would interpret this, and maybe the solution is getting the proposed building plans from the applicant.
And we got, and we got the plans where it says manufactured mobile.
Oh, yeah, so I think, I mean, I think it's, it's worth looking at, you know, I drove by today, but, you know, it's, it's odd, the front door is not toward the front. You know, but he also granted that, that certificate of occupancy and took his money. You know, I've dealt with issues of city staff mistake before. Usually it's in terms of a variance, when people just build things when they should have needed a variance, and, you know, trying to slip one past the city staff who are busy isn't gonna fly. I mean, you still have to follow the, the law. And, but, but there's a clear, I'm gonna find it and send it to you, but there's an email, one email where they say that they're going to lay a foundation. This is temporary, we're going to lay a foundation.
But, but, yeah, but again, it, it's not on anything that there is for the permits, okay, that's, that's why I turned it.
They might have to get a concrete permit or further permits or whatever.
Well, it's, it's, yeah.
But, but are they gonna do that, is my question? Like, is that really, are they waiting for the snow to thaw?
Or are we gonna allow it? That's the other way.
Because we're not gonna, we don't want that in, in, in the city.
Okay, mobile homes, they have licenses.
Yeah.
They're, they're different. Serial numbers and all that.
There's, there's all kinds of stuff that goes on.
I mean, manufactured it, I wonder.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's on the blueprints that are in there. Anyway, that's, so, thank you for that, I do appreciate that, Mike.
I'll take a look. It's an interesting one, and I, I don't want them to start a lawsuit before we know. What's this? Oh, it's Tom Weir.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know Tom, okay.
And I kind of just, uh, or the new chair and the new vice chair.
So Kathy Brandrucker is now the new chair, and Wendy is now the vice chair.
Are you gonna make that a motion?
Make a motion to accept them at their new position as chair and vice chair.
Comments? Saying none, all in favor, signify if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Hoes? From the fire department, request for some radio. Request for some radios. People, fire department, people, responders.
And I went back and looked, we made an adjustment that there was when we were doing our final budget of that in December. And they had originally requested four for both and now we cut that back to three. So with, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the, the three radios. That's already in their budget to be able to do that.
Second.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all favors, sign if I'm ever saying aye.
Aye.
Guidance approval, how to sell emergency vehicle or with emergency vehicle broker service. Dan or Johan, whoever wanted to speak to that, have you used these people before or how do you know of them?
So the request is general that, you know, we have two new vehicles that will be coming. And so we need to get rid of two vehicles. And so we wanted to put it to you. How would you like us to sell or get rid of these two existing vehicles? So we could do a sealed bid, we could do an auction, we could do a broker service. So we kinda wanted to get your discussion of, you know, how would you like to see those sold? So our last mini pumper, we did the local Orinoco auction, you know, got some cash for it, came to the city. I mean, that's an option, but we thought, let's talk, talk now so I can, whatever we wanna do, we can engage a broker service or we can, you know, do an auction place and try and get the word out there and, you know, get some interest before we need to get rid of it, cause I, we don't wanna have them sitting here after we're done. So we just mentioned a broker service because that could be one option to say, here, you do it, you post it. You know, we get the leads, we sell it, get a commission, you know, they get a commission.
Do you know what the, the percentage is for that, for what a broker service?
Firetech, was it eight? Eight? It was like a house. It was like six, eight percent if I remember right. It was, it seemed like a lot, but.
Had to take the load off.
But that's how we bought the Warren Township vehicle. They use a company called Firetech. And so there's a bunch of Ridley Mountain, there's a bunch of brokers out there. They help you.
Have you considered, you considered publicservice.com?
There is GovX, there's a whole bunch of places. You could set a minimum bid.
Yeah, well, the only thing that I'm looking at too is, is right now staff is so swamped to turn around and put something else extra on the staff. I think would be tough. So taking a look at a broker to me would make more sense. Let them do all the paperwork. You're giving up a little, but I think it would be.
These are older vehicles. I'm not, you know, I, I, I think a broker might give us a little broader. But I know a lot of these GovX and, you know, different sites also get exposure. I noticed that, could you sold their old pump through one of these government, you know, auction places and?
What's the value of the equipment?
Technology is the. I think the, the old ambulance is maybe five grandish. And then, and then it's probably, then our mini, our, our pumper, even though I think it's got some value, cause it looks nice. It's, you know, the home's thirty some years old. I'm thinking if we got between ten and fifteen, I'd be happy, but who knows? So like I said, a good use old one that was similar age, but a little less than they got nine on their government site.
So if it's expected to be a hundred and seventy-five thousand or more, you have to do competitive bidding basically, but you don't. It doesn't even come close to that.
No. So what year's the ambulance?
Two thousand and one.
Yeah, two thousand and one. When I was in a Yoda and we bought a new ambulance, because with the, you know, Yoda, we were a transport. We sold our old engine, I wanna say it was four or five grand to the Shriners. And so on the parades.
Miles were on it? I don't know something about it.
Was it nine thousand or is it?
Yeah, a little, little and nothing.
No, very many.
No, 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 that's on the pumper.
I'd have to look. Again, we weren't trying to go hear all the details of what it is. We just want your opinion on, how would you like to pursue selling it? Then we'll get all the details and I, I have all the data. We can run over and get all.
I'm getting sealed bid, a sealed bid probably is a lesser value. We get something.
I think, yeah, and then unfortunately, you know, can you, you know, if somebody lowballs you and they get it, then.
Yeah.
Like the auction place, at least you could have it reserved.
Yes.
And even these, you know, these, same thing with these brokers. You could say, you know, I wanna get this.
I, I think a broker might be the right idea to do it.
Especially with the engine. I think that one's got maybe a, a better value to, to get around the fireplaces. Otherwise, who wants an old, you know, really old, you know, ambulance that's not an ambulance. It's just a shell that we, we use.
So you basically gutted it?
You haven't got anything yet.
Well, I mean, is it gonna get gutted or, I mean?
No, I mean, it's, it's perfectly, the one thing, it never had, you know, a cop, already cabling for a cop. Otherwise, it's got all the compartments and air and electrical. So somebody could, if they really wanted to, make it a transport ambulance or a party bus. I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's probably could be much of anything. Again, the Shriners bought, you know, that one from Yoda, so there's probably some people thinking that they could find a use for it.
Well, if you look at, say, ten thousand dollars and if it's six percent for six hundred dollars, you weigh that versus losing six hundred dollars on a auction or a sealed bid, you're probably going, do better with a seal or a broker service.
Yeah, so can I make a motion that we put that up for a broker service?
Unless you guys wanna come back with.
No, we don't.
Come back with a broker, uh, broker service that you want.
I could, you know, again.
We can just say broker service and you come up with one.
Yeah.
I'd like to see you explore public service. It's a public surplus. I really would. Well, I think you'd be very surprised with the difference of me.
Were you guys happy with the auction place, the price that you got for the, the old one?
I mean, it's hard to know, but we have more. I mean, Orinoco auction, how many people saw that, you know, what exposure did we get and ended up being a local person that bought it?
Yeah, so that's, that's a reason why I have that, I think.
So you put this on like your brokerage you're talking about. You put it for a certain time limit, then it goes?
You, you say you're gonna put out there for twenty-one days. You know, you have to, I'm sure you have to open an account with them. You put it out there for twenty-one days, put, put a reserve on it. Uh, put a half a dozen pictures up there, put, put a number up there for contact information where they can see it at. They might call back and say, hey, I like a few more pictures, cause I'm in North Carolina. You know, you're gonna get, you take it up here and you're gonna get people from six counties to look at it and that's the end of it. You know, you take it, put it at a national, national auction site, you'll get, you'll get some exposure. I know Rochester Schools does that with trucks and stuff and they've sold, been surprised what they can get out of a pickup.
Do you know what percentage they take?
That I don't know.
Cause if they take the same, it might be better just to, you know, I don't know.
Well, you know, if, the, the, even if the percentage is the same, if you get twenty percent more, what's?
Right.
You know, you're only giving up six percent of twenty percent, you know, so.
Well, I just wanna, I just wanna say that, um, with the, with using a broker, um, like Redline, Fire or Brinley Mountain or Firetech, they're already in that space. So they can give us a better idea of what, what it's worth. You know, we're gonna put, Dan and I are gonna put a five thousand dollars on the ambulance. And they might come back and say, no, hang on guys, you're, you're selling yourself short. We're gonna put twelve-five on it. So in, in my opinion, being that we did buy that other, that other truck from Firetech, um, they did a pretty good job of marketing it, you know, and pricing it, um, pricing it to sell too. Cause we don't want these, we don't want these apparatus just sitting around. I, I would, I would say Firetech or, or another fire apparatus type site would be the best to go with. But it's totally up to you guys. We're just, we're looking, we're looking for, uh, we're looking for guidance, so.
I make a motion that, that, that you go ahead and pursue those people that you've already been working with?
Yeah, I'll second that. I just think that that's, I can appreciate what you're saying, Paul, too, whether you just wanna get rid of it, you know.
It's, it's not, it's, what I'm, what I'm talking about isn't something that Irv can go put, put a old car on an, an auction site. It's only for government bill agencies. And that's, and that's exposure.
From that point, this is fire apparatus service too, so it's very specific, so.
Every, every city has a fire apparatus service.
That's true.
They all sell stuff on.
Well, I like that idea of Firetech, even that, treats pretty good. I think you guys are.
Well, I think they treated the other, you know, seller pretty well. We didn't hear anything bad from them.
Yeah.
So.
It was also as advertised.
Yep.
That first one that we looked at was definitely not as advertised.
Yes.
Any other comments? All in favor, signify by using a broker service like Firetech or some, fire, or signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No vote? Vote? No.
Okay.
Right, and then the other one with the six wheeler, you guys were gonna, uh, donate that to the city?
Well, that's, you know, Kane put it down in his, but if you want, since we're here, you know, we're glad to talk about it. You know, so we, we, the fire relief purchased a new s- six wheeler, you know, paid with gambling funds. So citizens didn't have to pay anything. And so we have our old six wheeler sitting in the shop. And so we were talking to Kane about, you know, what's the best way, you know, again, you know, to get rid of it. And so Kane offered up that he could see a use for the wastewater treatment facility for us. And so we thought, you know, again, in our last fire meeting, we said, you know, are you sure that this would be, you know, something you could use? It kinda has a nice use, you know, we bought a new one with money and let, lets the city benefit with the old one. So he sounded amenable to it. So that, that's again, that his request is, you know.
So I, I think.
Make a donation of our, the fire department's six wheeler and give it to the wastewater treatment plant. They could use it and then maybe in a couple of years, that's not what they need. They wanna buy their own. They can, but it would save them the money of having to buy something.
Yeah, I think it is. It's great. I, I make a motion to accept that donation that you've given.
Change between departments, yeah.
Is a second over there?
Where?
For Jim?
Uh, I'll second.
Well, Jim said, I guess.
You were jumping down to H three.
Yes, we're down to H three. I see that. Thank you. Jumped around to, we're going back to do the motion though, to provide the insurance, right, retroactive.
Yeah, we'll go back to that one.
Yep.
Same topic.
Yeah.
Vehicle, so. All in favor of the donation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, we'll go back up to.
Thank you guys.
Last action item or secondary last. Motion approved from Friday. Well, we put insurance for Rachel and Renee, but they're here back safe.
Yes. We still get it.
I heard they tested Sire not going through Chicago.
Can't go through Chicago.
You went around your guy, didn't you?
She didn't try out the lights apparently. It's okay too.
Yeah, yeah, the lights when you come figure out.
I am.
The one, one thing we don't wanna, we did wanna note that, um, we don't know where that, we don't know where that number it came from. The fire relief isn't, isn't paying for other expenses. We, we are paying, we didn't say that we would pay for, um,
Our safety.
Well, no, for, for Renee and her sister to go down and pick it up. So we paid for their flights, their hotel, their meals, mileage, um, fuel and incidentals.
So did that come to the fourteen thousand or?
No, no, that's.
I don't know where the.
That's the one that I signed that you said you had to take with you.
No, that was at the forty-three thousand.
Oh, that was for forty-three, okay, so. Did you cancel the other three hundred that they sent?
I have two checks I have to void yet. I didn't get that far today.
Okay, so.
Fire Relief Association is gonna take care of that cost.
No, okay.
So, uh, the Fire Relief Association is gonna take care of that cost when Renee sends us the, all of her receipts and everything, we'll be writing a check to her.
Don't need a motion from us.
Nope, just, that's just kind of an FYI for you guys. That's why we weren't sure this came from.
Last item was, uh, what you added, Jim, about the township support, I guess the status.
Yeah, what it was when we were going over our budget last year. And I know that prior administrator had numerous conversations, um, that there was with the township. And that was to increase the rate that we're charging for first responders going to the township. Um, I haven't heard anything with what that amount was. And I mean, we're, we're way behind the able, cause it's been, I don't know how many years, probably six years since we've increased it.
It was many years.
Okay, and so.
It's my understanding that we've received the eight thousand dollars this year already. But, uh, Chris, Chris or Christopher.
Chris Edman got, received a letter from the township asking a bunch of questions. And so we responded to that because they wanted to know apparatus, call volume, so the last couple of years. And he sent that back. And so I just asked him at the end of last week, as he heard back and he's like, no. We did get invited to the annual township meeting in March where we usually give a report. So I guess we're kinda curious, you know, who's driving, you know, we had some amount was budgeted from the township based on some discussion. But obviously we're not privy to it. It sounds like they're not privy to it.
Well, the only discussion I was aware of was the, uh, figure that I inadvertently shared with the township that Sonny would be talking about. And I kinda caught on by surprise, but I told him that wasn't, uh, that was an error making that comment because we're not involved with those discussions and Chris was involved with the township. So I think it's up to the annual meeting to see if it's gonna get any increase, so.
I mean, you've gotta almost have an increase, cause that will help take care of what the cost is.
And last year, you know, when we talked about, they said they agreed then, yes, you know, you know, the fire department.
No question, at least to me, that's.
Yeah, so they agreed and that's when Sonny was supposed to step in and work with them and figure out the amount and, you know, here we are. Almost later.
I, I just didn't want it to go, you know, by the wayside. We've gotta pull that back and, and, and address it so that we can get some more funding out of it.
So is there any historical memos or anything that we need to worry about? That.
I think everything they asked, what they received.
Yes.
The report and everything, so.
Okay.
So unless we hear something ahead of time, we're assuming at the, at the meeting, when we do our presentation of, of, that maybe they'll say something about, okay, you wanna do an increase, yeah, here's, here's what we're gonna offer. I don't know. I would've thought that would've been.
Do you think you?
Yeah, it should've been a year. Another thing.
Are you in a position where you can give them a slight, suggested figure, a fair figure? If they're looking for a fair figure, what would you say?
I mean, I don't think Chris.
I think you said something rather than just saying.
And that number had got thrown out, uh, and.
What'd you give them?
Trying to figure out, you know, you know, eight is way too low.
Yeah, that's.
Hasn't changed in years and, you know, the.
I guess you should be thinking about a figure if you have.
Yeah.
Seriously.
We have to catch up and, and look at, what is it, ninety percent of our runs or?
It's about between two thirds and, and three quarters of our calls go to township.
Yeah.
Last year we ran a hundred and seventy-two medicals and a hundred and twenty-two of those were in the township versus fifty in town.
It's time.
The year before that, it was about the same.
And they agreed.
Yeah.
But you're right. We need to go up and, you know, we wanted to, Pine Island Fire Department, who services the fire of the township, they have, the way theirs is calculated is based on population. So each year theirs goes up. And so we said, you know, come up with some equitable thing that, you know, show us, you know, it's going up. Plus based on the fact that, you know, we're being a city entity, but we're covering, you know, three quarters of the calls going to township.
I think we should have a number going to them instead of let them say.
You know, and then not do a percentage increase, cause they'll go back to the eight thousand and do a percentage of what there is. So you've gotta go, you know, at, at least double it, I would, I would think, you know. But it should be at least somewhere between that. I was even saying, start at twenty thousand. You know, and, and, and see what happens from there, but, but, but go to that point and then do it on a population or, or a percentage of more calls that you have next year. Cause that would really help finance, you know, the stuff that's going on for everybody.
Actually, you're working with two townships, right?
Just one, just Orinoco Town.
We don't do New Haven?
Nope, nope.
Oh.
So do you have an agreement with them, like a mutual aid agreement or anything? Is there a written agreement with the township? So it's not a mutual aid agreement?
It's a, it's a contract.
They're not getting a.
Contracted by the Orinoco Township for medical.
But we do have a written contract somewhere.
Where would that be? We don't have it. In working in the city of Arlington, I could tell you that our fire department there worked with several townships.
Right.
And so.
Very common.
Right, and so some of it can come off of just the cost of the calls that they're doing. And so that's something that the fire department has to prepare for staff. We don't have any idea of what, of what a call costs or how many calls, if they have that many calls, what are we talking about?
Right.
I assume there's a, a relation, uh, an agreement between the city and the township. This predates all of us, right?
Right.
We wanna figure that out if we can.
Yeah, I think it should be based on, on call and expense, you know.
It's definitely, definitely based on expense somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, cause we can't be a charity.
One, one call, you're gonna need an oxygen tank. Next one, you're not.
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
Okay, we'll get back. If you come across anything, we'll, uh, share it.
Thanks. And I said, one quick clarification. So I heard on the previous, you had given us permission for three radios. But it's three for fire and three for response, six total? Okay, it's funny, I wasn't quite clear. I wanna make that clarification.
Yeah, when, when we were going through it, it was, it was four, but we were looking at, at fire and, and I didn't go back. But it was that different.
Three each.
Okay, three each.
That's correct. Thank you, thank you.
So it is six total.
Yeah.
For all, well. You said three, I don't know.
We didn't say.
Oh my God, I'm the minute take here.
We didn't clarify. We didn't clarify, we didn't clarify.
Question, are you keeping?
There's three for each.
Yeah, I'm glad, we'll get them right.
I apologize for that.
No. Three came.
Well, it was originally.
Okay, economic development, um, first action item is I'll make a motion to approve um. Ryan I courses the EDA president for twenty twenty-four, Jamie Ruffey as the vice president for twenty twenty-four. And also approve Jan Throssen's six-year, new six-year term as a member of the EDA. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you.
I can have.
First one.
Okay, I can have a issue with giving Jan a six-year term on there after he spent uh. He forced the city to spend two hundred thousand dollars on that wall, did you all have thoughts about that?
I don't have a say in that cost.
Well, the retaining wall around this building, that wasn't for the benefit of the city, that was basically for his benefit. And I just have an issue with uh spending, forcing the city to pay for the retaining.
Wow, okay, um, I didn't see that coming.
That mitigated risk though too.
Well, I know, I know it did some things, but.
You know, cause we could have gotten sued, you know, if he would have mowing, you know, if, if he had rolled a mower. I mean, plus the city cut into his property, right?
And the, the city's been asked to take care of the Presbyterian Churchill, and they don't do it.
But we didn't touch that.
That's just my opinion, so.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments? There's, is all part of our monthly meeting, this would have come, because in talking with Rebecca, I told her I was doing these three things, but she would have preferred to wait till March. When the minutes will come to approve, but um, you're up here doing this, so that's why I haven't. Add it right on, and Jamie in as addition to the two, that Kathy and Wendy uh were overlooked on P and Z too, so. What do the other members think about Jan?
We've got a second.
You ready to get a second at Erv's?
Just takes a vote.
Uh?
I mean, there is a second, so.
Right, yeah, we have a motion, I'm just getting some comments about.
But, but you're, you're, you're putting all of them together right on this motion.
Yeah, that was the.
Why don't you just separate them out?
I was gonna say, I'll hold up which two first. Withdraw my motion. I think the motion, we approve Ryan as the president and Jamie as the vice president for twenty twenty-four. Any other comments on those two? Let's see, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Great. I think a motion that we approve Jan uh for a new six-year term on the EDA. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, you already did once.
Well, I already did.
I guess I already know that's another go around, sorry.
I guess I misunderstood it.
It's okay.
Okay.
You can take her.
Yeah, you're good.
He already did, I didn't hear.
Yeah, he, he seconded it the first time.
No, first time, yeah.
Any comments of Paul's comment?
My, my comment was, um, and I know Paul, that your opinion on it, my, the way I look at it is. That wall, to me, mitigated risk of being sued. Um, and the fact that we cut into that property, I mean, we, we hashed this time and time again at council meetings. Um, and to the point to the Presbyterian Church, we didn't dig into their property like we did with Jan's. Um, I think it added a lot of aesthetics to the city, and we've got the matching wall, I think it's a good thing.
Potential for a sidewalk?
Yeah, and the sidewalk, so that's my opinion.
No, it looks nice, I mean, I don't have no problem, I look at it every day. You know, uh, I mean, maybe it could be a different color.
Okay, we've discussed that before.
Right, everything can get changed.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, um, any other comments? So you know, all is in favor of Jan, uh, the six-year term, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, close, no. Um, community engagement planning, uh, there's a brochure that was laying on the debut table, just to um. Continue to keep that in front of the council, it's gonna be next Tuesday night at the fire hall at six thirty, um. I, um, parts of survey went out to like six hundred and some residents. Um, unfortunately, they went to a lot of residents, now the residents have P O boxes, so um, hopefully those people that didn't get a survey, they. Saw it on Facebook or posters that are out with the QR code. They were planning to have, you know, um, different tables sitting around over the fire hall, so uh. The different aspects of parking, housing, residential, commercial, anything you can think of that affects the city. And this is gonna be opportunity for people to put posters on those different subjects, so we can get input into those and the different areas, and it's um. So that input plus the surveys for the online survey will all be put together, it's a Google survey, Google will put all the data together. And do some analysis for us or for Rebecca, and um, so EDA will use that. Um, we know there's information off of that survey that um, P and Z can use, cause it's gonna talk about housing and commercial and. Um, parks and everything, it's gonna be used for comprehensive planning, age-friendly community, we use it as well. Um, and the EDA too, so I think there's gonna be a lot of good takeaways from that, and we've got a lot of good information already, so. Look forward to that, if you can join us from six thirty to eight, I think it is.
So how many responses have we gotten just out of curiosity?
Um, I know, I think uh, online is up over fifty, and the um, the um, written is about the same. I'm thinking, we're still taking surveys now, people are still filling their codes out or filling surveys out, so. You always like to have more, but um, you can get twenty, thirty percent, that's a good turnout on surveys, I think, so.
And I'll say it was, it was very creative, what was sent out, you know, magnet.
Oh, yeah.
With the invite, that was, that was pretty good. Like, wow, that's convenient.
Yeah, Rebecca's put a lot of work into it and hopefully bring some good results, I think it will. Survey's still coming in, and again, the fire, our next, it's our EDA night for the month, February twenty-seventh, so.
Keep in mind, it's the same night as caucus.
And then caucus is there and that's over, at fire hall.
Yeah, that's, we thought we, we thought we had the fire hall or uh, or the mix-up, but that's okay. Uh, fire hall's gonna work out even better for us.
I think that's a good place to put it, I think it really is.
All right, next item is our parks and trails.
You need to action on that.
I make a motion to accept the donation for a hundred dollars?
Oh, uh, the community engagement, I, it's more of an update, there's no real, there's no action.
I thought that there was one in there, but yeah.
And we did got that, we approved that grant for five thousand dollars at the January meeting from Compendia Action, so that's covering all of the expenses. All right, uh, next item is um.
Yeah, Sheriff.
I'm sorry, we have a resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh five, we're accepting a donation from a resident for a hundred dollars for music in the park. And we plan to do that again this summer.
And make a motion that we accept the donation.
Second.
Any other comments? Seeing that all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is a voice, so Erv, when we have resolutions like this, we do a voice vote. Certainly we'll call the names and.
No, I don't, Council Richards? Um, okay, Mayor?
Hi.
Uh, Council Phillips?
Hi.
Council Endergrens?
Hi.
And Council Erv?
Hi.
Tried the last name tonight.
How you pronounce your names?
You can pronounce it any way you want.
What's the, what's the right way?
I, I think it's Deep Lammick.
Deep Lammick.
Deep Lammick. I just break it down, Deep Lammick.
Deep Lammick. Thank you, sir.
Oh, sir, Erv.
Probably my family members pronounce it a different way too, so.
All right.
We really have a resolution today.
Motion to approve?
I do.
Resolution? Next item is Public Works, uh, Kane's put together a program for. Pre-vain up maintenance for our five generators that we have now, either water, sewer, or fire. With twelve, ten thousand, five hundred two for five hundred twelve dollars and forty-seven cents for a three-year contract. Um. What would be nice, and I think it's just a matter of following up, is that we need to. Split these contract costs up between water, sewer, and fire too, to make sure we get into the right uh expenses.
Well, the other thing too, I was gonna mention on that, is two of the five are brand new. Okay, cause the one that's gonna be on lift station one and the one that's out at, at the plant is the other one. So those two should be under warranty that you shouldn't be doing anything with.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, so I think that the contract should be relooked at again and only look at the three, instead of looking at, at the five.
I think basically what they're talking about is they're talking about changing oil in them and have the warranty on genuinely.
We're products.
They're gonna have to run them once a month to make sure that they're, they're not, that they're functioning. And doesn't quite be part of it, just changing the oil, making sure the battery, poster, theme works, it would be.
Yeah, so they're exercising the generators on a routine basis, that's what's actually.
But if they're just gonna be doing this once a year, then for the maintenance, they're gonna be missing all the other stuff that's going on that they should be doing on a monthly basis. I don't, I don't.
Don't put it in the contract. There's a lot of maintenance.
There's a lot more to think to it, yeah.
I mean, I was just, I looked at that again, is, is that, um, can we split it out that way, cause I don't know if we have the budget and, and our budget for that, or is it gonna be able to come out of. Uh, Public Works?
Oh, we have, well, I'm assuming we have R M on all of these sewer.
Let's, let's start off, we had a, uh, number two, we already budgeted seventy-five hundred dollars to take care of the fire hall. That's in the budget. That's already in the budget, that, that was discussed back in December.
Well, we've got seventy-five hundred just for that, and you're looking at this, can we, we tie that together, that that goes into the, the ten thousand now?
I don't see why not.
And in that way, it's only gonna be a little bit of extra for the other three for three years.
These other, these other three shouldn't be much more than probably a.
And John or John, can you comment at all?
Well, I just think that. The wall, come on up, come on up. This one. So the three existing fire hall, the other are portables. I mean, we're gonna have a lot of generators, obviously, the big one, the main, out of the plant. Sometimes those aren't, they're a little more than just, you know, draining the water off the filters, uh, checking the air filters, changing the oil, the basic, the, the mechanical type stuff, you think. But then the also guy that gets out there is a laptop, he does load kelks, whatever he's gotta do, you know? So it is, it's, it's not something you wanna fall behind on by any means. And so it's, it's a pretty serious deal, I've dealt with a lot of generators, a lot of uh exercising generators, switching back and forth, power stuff. It's, to me, I think, and I'm sure Kane's put a lot of effort into this, would you? And so, and as y'all well know, I mean, he, Kane takes this stuff very seriously, so. I would seriously consider his recommendation as good as anyone else's that you're gonna, you're gonna find. And as far as it's brand new and it's under warranty, a lot of stuff's brand new and under warranty, I mean, how much equipment do we have out at that plant right now? Not working, I mean, there's HVAC stuff, right, there's a, a gas valve, I know that wasn't functioning. And I was thinking this earlier, earlier not to get off in the weeds, but warranty's great, but I don't wanna just rely, just, you know. Eh, it's new and we'll worry about it when it don't run, or you know.
Or you don't cover service.
And, and right, right, so.
And I didn't, it didn't look like a seventy-five hundred that's there, so when you're looking at that and only the ten for everything that there is, and it's. It's, it's good, I think, that way if we've already approved that, then thanks for, for doing that, so.
Yeah, so, all right.
Cause I have a hard time believing that, about seventy-five hundred to service the one over here.
Yeah, that's not very big, there was the fire hall.
It's a budget item, it's not saying, when you're, we're gonna spend it, but in case, you do need to spend it.
We have. And now, that one runs almost every other day, or it runs quite often.
John, are all of them natural gas?
Uh, not, no.
Not the portable one, that's diesel.
Yeah, yeah, we've got.
And the one at the plant's diesel, okay, and the other ones that are portable are diesel, correct. The only one is not for gas.
And see, that'll be part of the service, because they're not gonna, they're not gonna burn, more unlikely, they're not gonna burn a tank full of fuel, it's probably a hundred or two hundred gallon tank. And they'll be changing the fuel.
Plant's got a bigger tank than that.
Well, they'll be changing, they'll be changing the fuel at the end of the year.
That being said, that fuel's a whole nother thing, I've dealt with a lot of heavy equipment, a lot of, I know all about that, LG, the old, you know, everything that goes along with it, I'm sure you have too, or can love your head. Doing excavator stuff back, you know, whatever, but uh, yeah, I just, I don't know, it's something you don't wanna take lightly, that's for sure, at least I. In my position with John and Kane, I mean, I think we need to, we look for ourselves and everybody that lives in this community to, to, you know, really.
Absolutely, but yeah, we already budgeted seventy-five for to start with, so actually, I'll add about three grand.
Year, so if you look at the quote, the ten thousand, five hundred, if you divide that by three years, by five components, it's seven hundred dollars a year. That's, that's two smart looks.
That's right, yeah.
It's not your diesel. You're not the light bill of City Hall, I mean, it's, yeah.
It's, it's portables from two thousand one.
And I mean, but we've been, they've been maintained pretty good, and I mean, that, that, that stuff is, is in decent shape over there, which is good, which is good.
Well, is it at River Park or is it Riverwood Hills?
The only one that's good, all the other three are over right now at Public Works, okay? The natural gas one that they're gonna be putting in is gonna be at lift station one. Okay, and then the other one is a diesel that's out at the plant.
The portable, I thought, use a River Park.
What's that?
The portable one is to use at River Park.
Right, right, but that, you're talking just a little gas generator there, right?
Red one.
True, all the red, the, the, yes, yes.
Sixty K V is what it is.
Sixty, yeah, but I'm, I'm thinking you said, uh, you'd said three at, at our shop right now.
There's three, you have a new one and a red one.
Right, right.
And you got two over there?
Only two over there.
Okay, okay.
So when you said three, you kind of threw me for a loon, but other than a little, you know, a little Generac, uh, you know, something you take out of the field.
I had a question, is there one in Riverwood, in, in Riverwood Hills, at the, at the well over there?
Well, I don't know, it's at the well.
I don't think we put the connection in there to use.
Well, yeah, that was, that was part of the whole two whole type that we have in our shop right now, that could be wired in to the well houses if need be, or. You know, there, you've got a little bit of uh, of flexibility with those, I guess.
Right, I'm surprised we don't have one over there.
Well, the point is that either one or the other gives one.
Yeah, cause you kind of. Well, yeah, yeah, cuz you kinda got a lead leg system almost, you know, I mean, if, if a well goes down. Like if River Park wellhouse, you know, it's shut off for three weeks, y'all never know. So, I mean, if, if the power's an issue right there, but not, you know, on the west side, or vice versa, whatever. Fine.
So how much does it take to, to run that one over at the wellhouse over there? How much power?
To, to switch it over, I, we, I've never done it yet, I mean, I, but, uh. Imagine take a ton, that, that the one in River Park?
Yeah, I mean, the River Park is, is a sixty KW. I was just wondering, do you have enough power there is on the seventy-five to run at the other one for the well? Cuz I don't know what, what that motor pulls.
Right. Four hundred fifty gallon pump, I think, versus a thousand.
Right, right. Yeah, the River Hills one would be the one that I'd be worried about.
Yeah, that's why I was kinda wondering if she's a workhorse, so.
That's something I think the city needs to address, making sure there is a generator available for that.
It's better than Pine Islands, they got a back tractor up to theirs and hook a P T O shaft through the building, so I mean.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the, uh, three-year contract for the ten thousand five hundred twelve dollars and forty seven cents. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Computers. Replace, so, older ones, or two of them, I guess.
The laptop.
Three.
Where three?
Four. Purchase four new, same laptops where Public Works at. And recommendations, purchase four.
The Kane's, Kane has one already, that's. He's been using for a little sewer project and everything, I think he wanted the other one.
The only thing I was gonna, gonna, uh, point out is, and this is an example of it. I turned around and got a refurbished Dell. That's, that's here, that's got a, a five hundred gig. On the state hard drive, you know, sixteen gigs of RAM that there is off of it, with a one-year warranty, and five hundred bucks. Well, and I, and I just don't know if we need them all, okay? You know, the, the, you, you guys are supposed to be out working outside, not sitting behind doing computers, so.
I, I got a question. Well, it says that public work staff needs their own reliable, each person needs their own computer out the wastewater.
Or, or, or you could use a, a memory stick that there is and have one out there and.
Oh, you're stuck, buddy.
That's alright, yeah. Uh, the way it is now, we all have one at our desk, so Kane has his, John has his, I have mine. When we get to the plant, we had discussion about this just the other day. And you want us dragging laptops all around here, there, whatever, you risk breaking up and dropping, whatever. So the plan was that we wanted four identical matching, and, and I don't, you know, I guess. That would be more Kane, well, this is all Kane's department, but I'm just. Uh, what you said, I, if we could have four matching units with all the same, you know, so it's. Apples to apples here. You know, we have one at the plant, we have one in Kane's desk, one in John's desk, and one on my desk. And now, that's what Kane wants, I think that's what, that's what we want, and.
And also, um, uh, it's gonna be done, but also preparing for the next employee as well. Because we'll have another, we all know, that whatever, whatever it is. And yes, kicking the idea back and forth to carry one from the shop, the plant, the vice versa, whatever, so.
No, and, and, and I carry mine. Works fine, I take it wherever it is, that's why it's called a laptop. Okay, and the other thing too, you know, looking at it, I think that we've got four Chromebooks that we would love to give you. There you go, you got four.
I couldn't care less, like I said, this is.
There we go, get rid of our Chromebooks, and they, they got.
We need to have Kane, cuz it's limo, you referenced four, but the quote is only for three.
Okay.
So we need to clarify that.
Yeah, so let's bring this back, and I. I'm not gonna go for this.
Okay, we'll bring that back then. Yeah, next time, we've prepared already, so we're the personnel. Update on the policy.
Yeah, so, um, we've got the updated hard copy. Um, and I was just talking with Mike before the meeting, I had left a message, uh, with Nico. So we're gonna put it in electronic version, send it to him with edits turned on, so we can see who's editing what. And we'll take it from there.
So I sent him an email, it was during the meeting, I've had some time here. So I, I sent an email and copied you on it, and just said he's gonna be sending, you're gonna be sending it to him, so to look out for it.
Yeah, so I have to go in and make those on electronic versions.
Yeah, and then I told him that you want it done, I didn't, I just kinda put it over, but you want his comments before the March meeting, which is the month for now. That's probably right, right?
Yeah, no, I mean, every, everything is done with it, so I mean, it's ready to go, so.
You get it to him within a week, I think that's enough time to do it for the French.
Okay. So that's good progress.
Update, top of the next page is new hire status of every physician.
Yeah, so, um, the new city administrator. Um, offer has been made and accepted, and I think in our packet, we have. Employment agreement. And.
It's on your desk, I think.
So, the new city administrator. In terms of the employment agreement, will start March twenty-fifth. We're all right, saying who it is? Now that it's signed, um, yeah, so it's Jason Baker. Jason is joining us from South Dakota.
Share just some brief backgrounds, or?
Pardon?
Just share some brief backgrounds.
Yeah, so, so Jason, Jason is in law enforcement right now, um, and, oh, I forget the college.
Um, you're in South Dakota State.
Yeah, South Dakota State, there you go, um, so, and he's also, uh, uh, finishing up or working towards his PhD.
In, in city administration.
City administration, yeah. And I forget, hi- his wife is in the financial.
She has worked for the county.
Yeah.
Yes, in South Dakota.
Yeah, so, um, and they, I will say, um, they'll be looking for a house, if anyone knows. Of any homes for sale.
Yeah, there are two kids that are coming, nine and ten years old.
Yes, yes, and I, I'll say, so the council had, had the opportunity to do the interviews. Um, and, uh, we, we ranked them, and, uh, Jason was the second one on our list. First one, uh, ended up turning us down, uh, for some personal reasons. And, uh, we're happy to get Jason. And we're unhappy to lose Shirley.
Are you making a motion for that, or this is just? I'll give you my update.
And, and, yeah, and then, then let's, let's comment after that.
I'm glad that you have a new administrator coming. I fear that he doesn't have enough experience, but he'll get him trained, I'm sure. Um, I, I, next week I start a new job with another city. And so we need to talk about whether you want me to come back anytime at all during the weeks to work with staff, to try to get some things caught up. If you need any training assistance, I'll, I'll work that in. Most times, new people coming in, they don't need me there every moment of the day. You know, we can start out in the week and go over some things that you'll need to know, and then I can leave and come back, or he can call. You, you know, I'll take phone calls, but it's been a pleasure working for all of you.
Loved having her up there, you've been great. Yes, we'll, we'll be getting in touch with you.
Want me back at all, I mean, you know, if you want me next week, just let me know, and then I'll make sure that I get it.
My opinion, I would say yes, Renee? If you could tell us the number of hours, um, and days, whatever.
Let me try to get through next week, and then I'll kind of come up with a plan, both for the new city and this one. And I would think maybe Thursday, and then I'd come and work here Friday, and I know they close at noon, but. Renee said maybe it would be good if she could work a few hours in just the quiet time. And so we just work till two or something like that on Friday, so that we can get some things cleared up. It's really difficult, phones ringing, people coming in, and so it's hard to get a lot of things done here.
One thing I would suggest, you tell me you had experience doing the, the, the overlap, the transition. My suggestion would be, once Jason comes on. If you could spend a little bit of time with him in terms of what you've done, and what needs to be done. So you can kinda create his, his tick list, um, I think would be good.
I will have some good material for him. We follow the League of Minnesota Cities. And they have a schedule, a calendar, that he can follow everything that he needs to know between the city attorney. And the league, he will be well taken care of. The one thing he has to remember is that he works for the five of you. And so one person coming in and asking for something, he has to always remember to say, it has to be council approved. That's the only big thing, you know, all of you, I've kind of tried to talk to the new people. It's not that you can't come in and address him and talk with him, but it just takes a lot of time to visit with five people. When we come to a meeting, that's what he should be doing, is meeting with you then. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Richard.
Well, yeah, I mean, they just gotta vote on.
That's right.
Not everything, so they gotta vote.
Well, one, one thing which leads to the next, which is the, the part-time, uh, assistant, um. Lori was our, our second choice, and, and we wanna offer her the position that there is. And she comes with a, a little bit of deputy clerk experience. That, that she's had, and so I think that might help Renee, at least. It's, it's not like it's not understanding anything, but at least two years. Yeah, she's got a little bit of, of knowledge that goes along with, with that, um. And, um, she's.
Two years of city experience?
Deputy clerk experience, and then.
And, and, and it's, it's something that I, you know, we like to have her be able to just jump in right away. And be able to, to pick up, she's anxious to get down here. Uh, right now, she's living up in the Saint Cloud area, but she'll be coming, and she's ready. To start within two weeks, or if we need to do it sooner, whatever else, yeah.
So the other thing I'll mention is, is she doesn't have just the city clerk experience, she has state experience.
Right, she worked for the Department of Corrections for a lot of years.
Yeah, a lot of years. Oh, gosh, what else? I don't have her resume right now.
I mean, we went through six different people that did work for interviews with, with that. Um, yeah, she worked for the city of Lewiston. Uh, other than that, she's been, um, department manager, at times at IV, doing stuff that way. Uh, she was in the correctional, state correctional office in Red Wing from two thousand five to two thousand seventeen. So she's, I think, knows how to follow policies and different things that way, I think, which will be helpful, you know.
And has, has written, um, as we asked, code, city code.
She understands, she's actually been looking at stuff online already.
And the updated codes, city codes from the other city that she worked for, um, policies.
She, she did personnel, okay.
Yeah, she did the personnel policy hand.
This is all Lori, right?
Yeah.
No, I, I think it's gonna be a very good fit.
That's a good candidate.
Yeah, we did, we already did. This was number two, so, and I think it's gonna fit well with what Renee needs to be able to.
So, uh, so do we need a motion to approve hiring of Lori then?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve and hire Lori.
Second.
And what is her rate? Twenty-five?
I think it's twenty-five. I don't have, I didn't bring my personnel binder.
That, that's what's in our.
How many hours and then their benefits on?
And, uh, twenty hours is what, what we, we offered her, um, she did ask for, for more, okay? So she's willing to step in if, if that's the case, and there's extra help needed. You know, that, that she can dedicate that time that there is, but we did it with what we had originally did. But, but she's, she's flexible, and, you know, that's where I think to pick up on doing minutes or other things, so.
But you've offered the job already to her?
No, we're waiting for this approval, but she knows it has to come through city council first before we do it and make it official.
I just wanna make sure that's clear to the personnel committee, that any hiring or offering of job offers have to come through the council.
Absolutely, and she knows that too. Okay, so she's aware.
Alright, any other, so we don't have a firm start date, do I hear that or not?
Um, she said she could start within two weeks of, of, I'll let her know in the morning. Uh, she can start within two weeks of notice, or if we need her sooner, she can work with us.
Two weeks from tonight would be the fifth of March.
Yeah.
They work with you? Payroll, calendar, everything, or do you know what that payroll date is, make any difference?
Yeah, it's nice to start on the payroll.
Yeah, if you can get a firm start date to share with Renee, that'd be great.
Yeah, Renee, is, how far is that from the cycle, or what would be the cycle? Or we, we can work with you on that too.
Alright, you have a comment?
That would be in the middle of a, it doesn't matter.
We'll, we'll work with you.
Yeah, I think you need somebody in here as soon as you can get them, so.
Well, it's not like they're salaried or anything, it's just.
It shouldn't, but it just makes it easier.
Well, let's just go ahead and let's, let's move ahead with that, and.
Yeah, this, I think sooner we could get her in, the better.
Better, yeah.
Alright, there's no other comments, all in favor, signify by saying aye to offer Lori. Public Works Assistant?
Think that was being reposted.
Did we need a motion to approve Jason's contract?
Now, if, if you do, I'll make a motion to approve Jason's contract.
Let's go back and.
Yeah, so.
Your second, yeah, second.
Do we need a motion if we like?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, though we've already got, so we just need to take a road to them, for sure.
All in favor of hiring Jason Baker as a new city administrator, clerk treasurer, signify by saying aye. Pose, that's great, it's approved, the board didn't see him. Last item is, uh, performance review for John and John.
Are, are we gonna?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, does it repost it?
No, we haven't done anything with it.
Shall I make a motion that we repost the Public Works Assistant position?
Second then. So we're looking at the, with the Zorro paper, and what else are you guys looking at?
I would like to do, uh.
Indeed.
Indeed, I think that that's good, or even say to get the right person to go into Rochester, you know.
I'm gonna see if there's some place with the county that we could post it.
It's expensive.
No, I I mean, if Olmsted County, if if they would post it somewhere. You know, someone that works there, I'll see if they if they do that. That'd be a need if they would for the city.
So, John, where did where did you find? Where did you find yours when you were looking for your job?
This job?
Yeah.
I was really looking for a job, but, uh.
So we.
Where'd it, where'd it mouth? Yeah, I never really, the grapevine. Search them all.
Where'd it mouth?
Yeah, yeah. But it's a tough, everybody here knows it's a tough market out there nowadays to find good quality candidates. I mean, I think that indeed thing is a good idea. I know we've, the twenty years I was with Superior, we had good luck at different times hiring off of those, a lot of those sites like that, the the ones that are more low gully and all more to this area, I think, but.
We've used indeed to own personnel, so.
Yeah, I think it lists.
But there's a fee now, there's, it wasn't before, now it's about, not sure what that fee is.
We got some good.
But I think it's well worth it because we haven't had luck to this point except for one person.
No, we have two candidates.
Facebook, I won't even your site, I mean, I don't know if you can do anything with those, the new signage out there that.
Right.
You know, the, whatever, it's like, it's an idea, I mean. That's a good idea, it's free, already got it, so.
Renee's got a lot going on, I worry, but I, at this point in time, I'll worry about that later, so.
Hey, you ever roll some? Any other comments? Saying down in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's, same sign, it's approved. Now, the next item is to approve performance reviews for John and John. Oh.
I make a motion to approve the performance reviews for the two Johns.
A second.
So did Personnel Committee do the reviews?
No, Kane did.
Is there a reason why you didn't do them?
Uh, Kane passed them off to us after he did that, and so.
Cause we always use them before.
I'll be glad to interview both you guys.
Yeah, it makes no difference to me, to be honest, but yeah, it was just a logistical thing that, you know, so.
Guys, just just awareness for the Personnel Committee to be involved with those reviews, so you're, everybody's up to speed, cause they are the Personnel Review Committee, so they should be aware of it, so. So have those reviews been sent to office and?
I don't know if he didn't put it in the file, I mean, I I got the review from Kane.
Need to come to City Staff to put in files.
We'll make sure.
We can, yeah. You should put it in there, so.
Yeah, so.
And I will say, so when Sunny was here, the way she wanted it is, we would review Kane and the city administrator and the the managers would review their their people and not the Personnel Committee. And that's what we were following.
Yeah, but if if that's the case, I have no.
Yeah, I have no problem doing reviews.
Be glad to do it.
Yeah.
Thank you for that, Ryan.
Yeah. So.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, O's? Same sign, it's approved. Next item, I I wanted to bring back the resolution that we talked about in January after the, uh, Excel Energy people were here. And the memo, the email that's in your packet, um, if you look at the second page on that email from Ellen, I, she was one of the two people that were here. And as a result of, um, Supervisor Dale from our, Tom Ford from New Haven and from our presentation or with her feedback, they have re-evaluate, you go back and look at that CapEx twenty twenty lines as an alternative option, which we heard at our meeting that they weren't, it's too costly to do that, but they are, they have agreed to look at that. So I'd like to, uh, proceed with voting on that resolution that we didn't vote on last time and share that with the Excel Energy as well, supporting that CapEx line, so.
Okay, is that, uh, I'm sorry, Ryan, I was just looking at at which option, is that, you know, just on the map?
Options, this question, segment four is four.
It's four, the the green line right now.
Okay, the option three.
That's the one that comes right down the blue, right across Lake Bed, or no?
No, no, that was the first one.
It was right above, right above Orinoco.
It's it's a green. It's the green one.
Comes from the North Rochester Substation East. Skirt to the top of Orinoco, going straight.
Yeah, comes out of Chester Junction. That went much better than than the blue one.
And I don't think we went into the detail, but they would draw them. What they'll do that is.
The resolution says option four east, option four.
The segment four.
It says option four east, that's this road.
Four east is the blue one.
No, we didn't want that one.
The segment four has, will have three op, will have three options. The one that goes through New Haven, the blue one through Orinoco, and now the green one, which wasn't an option, but now it is an option. Like I say, just reading what the resolution says.
Which one are you reading? The wear asses?
Well, I'm reading, I'm reading the resolution twenty-four, twenty twenty-four old four.
Yes, but what are you reading? The wear asses?
Well, where as the MRT project segment four route.
They, that identifies, now therefore is what you'll have to pay attention to. Because the current routes, it just identifies what those routes are, they they haven't changed, those routes were there. That's not what you're voting for, you're voting for whatever's in, after in the wear ass.
In the to be resolved.
Right? Is that the segment four transmission, or do we have that wrong way?
Uh, so where as, where as, where as, you know, I just, I I don't like that option four at all.
Route permit application for the segment four.
Well, I think maybe the, it's really. It's really segment four. Route option four east. Route option four west. And.
Four west is the dark line coming down and. The way I had in New Haven.
Yeah, they're saying east and west. They, I, we don't have a new name for the, uh, other than saying, in that there before we resolve that.
Yeah, I get it.
We're looking at one alternative.
Yeah, I think I think you're just misreading, so it says, all they're saying in that first part of that sentence, that the city council, the city of Orinoco supports, including in the route permit application for the segment four proposed transmission line. So in that application, that's what they're gonna propose in their application, that's what they came to tell you.
Okay.
And in that application, you're proposing, including after the comma, at least one alternative for the new single circuit line. So I think what that's saying is you're 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 resolving to add an alternative to the the proposal, it's oddly written. I had to read it three times, so, nobody should feel bad, but yeah, I think that's, that's what they're saying, I mean. And is this what they gave us, or who drafted this, Ryan?
It came from them.
They may rename it to route option four north or something.
Well, it would be helpful if they had, if they would have put in there one of the alternatives in the attached.
Well, yeah, exactly.
One, two, or three, or segments one, two, or three. So I get, yeah, not great, but I I think that is what it's saying.
And I guess the question I would have is, you know, who determines when the alternative is going to be used versus?
Or which alternative?
Yeah, which alternative?
Cause what he was saying was, or what she was saying, woman was, that it's only gonna be two alternatives that they have to send to the administrative lodge judge, the one that they're proposing and then one alternative. And I thought there was four total alternatives.
That's what I thought, right, and they were here.
But they had to choose two. Two, they have to do at least two, but she said, and so they're gonna do two, not more than two. So this doesn't say which one, it just says to include an alternative. But I thought she said you had to include an alternative anyway, maybe I missed her that, but anyway, whatever.
So we hope that they'll choose, from the city's perspective, they'll choose New Haven and Cap twenty, they have to choose two and not the one through Orinoco.
Yeah, and that's, that one, I don't want that.
Basically, we could say, we're hoping we're taking care of Orinoco.
Right, and they they could write from the start, say, okay, we're gonna take this.
Assuming you like it, so.
So when does it cost us to do the blue one, that does anything else?
When does this have to be done by?
I don't wanna tell, no.
The planning was through the end of December and they allowed to work with us a bit more, and so I think we're, I don't wanna really go any further.
Okay, all right, cause you could, I mean, you could probably just do whatever resolution you want.
There'll be more opportunities for continued support to either in person or that whole process, have more hearings coming up.
It would have been better to write this more direct and forcefully, but includes a warehouse that we disagree, you know.
You wanna, is it worth it to take and rewrite this to make it a little bit?
I think it's okay because.
It it, I mean, it does what you needed to do, so.
Could've been done better, yeah, but when they say they're looking at another alternative route on CapEx, that's, that's our verbiage and our resolve, so we're supporting that.
I kinda think it's good to have the same from each of the cities, too, or the, that all these different townships are gonna be approving the same thing. City of Plano, too.
I assume so, I haven't seen their resolution.
Why, but I assume that, you're saying that the people, people from Excel made this, right?
Um.
Who drafted this?
This came from Dale in the New Haven Township.
Oh, okay, so it did come from us, our side. I was thinking you, that the people were trying to build second floor, oh, yeah, that totally is.
Which one then?
Right before that, no, it's on one page.
Well, the thing is, they just wanna get one. Yeah, it makes me feel better that they drafted it, though, not not the energy company that wants to do second floor.
It's all. Okay, um, I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash old four. Second.
I didn't wanna dissuade you, cause I think, again, if you're against it, you should.
Well, if they're gonna be against it.
Yeah.
And it comes, you can't argue.
Yeah, I'd hate to, you you don't approve it because it doesn't have the exact language you want. And then the administrative lodge judge that reviews this says, well, Orinoco didn't oppose it, cause they didn't have a resolution. So it's not as good as I would have liked it, but keep that in mind.
So we can always turn it down, right?
Well.
Well, is there a second, please? Can't believe there's no second. How can you tell your residents you opposed a potential line going through our park along the highway? And you did nothing.
By not giving.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, is oppose that, that's that's exactly what we're doing, we don't want them to go through our park.
We can't, it doesn't make any difference if we oppose it or not, because they'll do whatever they want. All we can do as a city is identify, we would like to see this alternative option down the CapEx line. That's what we're saying. If that CapEx lines comes back and somebody comes back to you and say, how did you vote for this? And we said it was okay. Really?
We're not saying.
I saw things within vocal, then second the motion.
No, cause if if we second it, we're saying it's okay.
No, no, you're not.
But it's it's four, well, the four, right?
We're we're, we're providing an alternate, we're supporting an alternative line down the CapEx twenty line.
Right, that's what.
That's what it says.
So, yeah, the last, after the last comma, and then now we'll be for resolve, it says, you know, before that it says the city of Orinoco supports, after the comma, at least one alternative for the new single circuit one sixty-one kilovolt line that includes essentially following the existing CapEx twenty twenty transmission line route from North Rochester, so that's what you'd be supporting, whatever the one that follows the CapEx, the existing CapEx twenty twenty. That's what you'd be supporting.
Okay, and then that is.
And if you don't wanna do that, don't vote for it, but that's what this.
No, I I mean, when when I see this other one that came from from Dale, up for that one, you know, it's on a, uh, wire, then it explains a little bit more of what what that is versus, I I was missing this whole page that wasn't even in my book.
Your packet?
No.
Did you get?
Yeah, there's two pages.
Yeah, no, I just got the one.
Before the, right, before the resolution.
I guess it didn't. I mean, it would have been nice if they said, which one, which colored line is the CapEx twenty twenty?
Yeah.
Three, but they just.
Which is the?
It goes here, road four east is what you have right to Orinoco.
Yeah, but we don't.
Well, they didn't, cause it wasn't.
The resolution says. CapEx twenty twenty.
Here's the CapEx twenty round.
Hold the conversations down to one, please. So when they put, when they gave this map to us, the green line was not an option, so that's why they didn't identify.
Ah, I see, that made no sense to me, why they didn't identify.
This is a, this, oh, this is the only thing that's, that we have, yes.
It's the, Paul said it's the green, Paul saying that the green line is the one that you would be supporting.
Yes.
That's CapEx.
Yes, because, because the way it was explained to us last time was, now, there's two sides to the, to the towers. One of them's a three sixty-four, there is a one sixty-one.
Right.
Now, in in order to do, they wanna upgrade the other side, the both sides to three sixty-four. But in order to do that, they have to add an additional one sixty-one.
No, I and I I was tracking what she was saying, when she was talking, I just didn't know.
If you look at the last sentence.
So what they're gonna do is, with the CapEx line, they have to go out and ease another hundred feet on the side of a hundred and fifty feet that's there for the big line. So the one hundred foot easement along the CapEx line today, which is a hundred and fifty, will cover the one sixty line.
Yeah, and will not go south on fifty-two then, it'll go across on that green.
No, it still follow the CapEx.
Right.
The CapEx is a hundred and fifty foot and they have to go up to the owners and get another hundred foot easement.
Right.
For the one sixty for the new line.
If they're gonna follow it.
So if you wanna support that, you'd be voting for the resolution.
Well, their biggest, they 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 refuse to do that because of the river crossing.
Right, you know, I understand that, but the the point of this resolution is to support, giving that as an option.
We're supporting.
Supporting, giving that.
An alternative which they're suggesting themselves.
You're right, they're not gonna do it.
I'm so sad, Ryan.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So. I did three P myself, though, current CapEx is a hundred and fifty with a three forty-five and one sixty. And so you're right, they wanna put three forty-five on that one and move this one sixty before they talk to us about these other alternatives through Orinoco or New Haven. Because of our presentation, the comments, and what Dale Dale from their New Haven Township, they've agreed to go back and look at this hundred foot easement on the side, following the CapEx line for the one sixty. So there's three alternatives. They haven't, they didn't say they were not gonna look at our alternative, but they're saying they're gonna look at CapEx again because they didn't before because of the cost. But because of the pushback and the comments from us in our meeting, and then all the other resolutions that are supporting the CapEx alternative, that's what they're, that's what we're trying to support and continue to share with them that that's what we want, we don't want it through Orinoco. And the only way we could do that is by passing this resolution to seek a least alternative, one alternative for the new, passing CapEx twenty twenty.
So you're supporting.
So we're supporting that.
We wanna support that alternative.
Okay, it's really hinkly, it's not easy.
Yeah.
But that's, you would be supporting the alternative, not the one that goes directly through town.
Right, right.
So that, if that's what you wanna do, you wanna vote for the resolution.
Okay.
It also said that, you know, the local government in the area will review the option again to determine if that route is a viable option.
Mark for the confusion, but that helps clear it up. Ask for a second.
I, I, I'll give a second if that's what we're doing up for that.
Alright. Alright, any other comments?
Um, Councilman Richards?
Aye.
Sounds like Pendergrass?
No.
Councilman Erd?
Aye.
Aye. And Mir?
Aye.
So it's four one, four.
That's approved. Alright, New Business?
Well, there's a fee schedule that. Steph highlighted with red in your packet. Along with that. It includes the next item that includes the. The water rates, which are over on the far right hand side.
We don't see that stuff.
Alright. It's in the back of the settlement agreement.
Oh, back of that one.
What about the one that I kinda marked up?
Uh, that's in the packet too, I believe.
You know, I really do. And I didn't go up that much, I just.
I don't need to see it.
I get it. Okay. So staff made, yeah, so we put in the water availability charge. Along with the sewer availability charge, the financial investment fee, the sewer rates and the usage rate that we agreed to. In January, it was all part of the update. There was a couple of other changes that staff was recommending, um, at the top of that page. Meeting rooms, kitchen, the thirty dollar rest, that's a change with the meeting rooms with kitchen. Refundable for two hours, refundable, refundable post, those fifties.
You didn't go up on any of those, you kept the same rate as there was last year. But I would go ups on, on the ones that I had, I recommended.
So off to the side. There's a comment about take out the fifty dollar deposit. And just go with payment. Keep the hundred dollar damage deposit. Oh, so keep a hundred dollar damage deposit and fifty, not two deposits, you know? Well, the packet, Jim, it's gone through it as well, and. Some things that we don't, some things we do. Something we just, fire response teams. That's really depending on, um, insurance as well.
They also think we should have a business license.
Insurance claims. One I cut by was this annexation fee, that's something that's negotiated with the township.
Chicken license.
Well, no, but I, I, I think that we also need to turn around and look at a business license also in the city.
I think some of the raises are. Really, lot split fee going from three hundred to five hundred.
Do you have to do?
That seems a little, little high, but that's my opinion. Uh, lot split fees, street vacation.
Because you have to have.
Variance and appeals, five hundred dollars.
No, so that's why I'm saying we gotta do engineering, for those, I'm trying to cover our engineering costs, because we always end up. On the short end, oh, towards the lot split, I mean, we're always on the short end of, of those, and. I'm just trying to have it so that, that we're not picking out of everybody else's pocket if somebody wants that lot split. I mean, five hundred bucks is no big deal. If you want your lot split, you're gonna put five hundred bucks down.
Yeah, there is injury, same thing with the street valley, alley vacation.
You know, because again, it takes engineering, that's what I'm saying, I wanna try to cover the engineering costs.
You get a lot split?
No, you gotta do engineering, cuz Phil's gotta go in and split that up and do everything that he needs to have for.
I did a lot split, I didn't have to. I, I had it surveyed, I come in with.
But not everybody has it surveyed, okay, that's why.
I was required to, come in with the survey and say, this is what it looks like, what it would look like.
Anyway, I'm just, I, I, you know, for a lot of these, I just think we should, we should go up a little bit, that's all.
Some of them I think, but I think, some of these I would say no.
Well, that's okay, I mean, but I, I don't wanna just go with what we had last year and pass it out, I think we should go up.
Well, everything else is going up.
Yeah, that's right, that's why I said it should go up.
Well, most time they use a percentage to go up. So I don't know how you determine.
Well, I just doubled it for chicken feed, for chicken license, okay, so, nobody's ever had a chicken license, I pay her forty bucks, it's no big deal.
I think we should get rid of the chicken license.
We could, you know, staple the item and bring it back, if you want more.
Let's do that, you know, cuz I, I, I think we should raise it.
And that's why we put yours in there, so they could see it. You know, we, I do think that your residents are getting hit really hard this year, so. People come in, they can hardly afford the water meters and the water and all of that, so. I don't know if it's a good time for your residents to have all of this. Now, if it's just businesses and other people that you're thinking about, developers, then go ahead and, and increase.
Yeah, that's a different story, but I, you know, and things I, like the water reconnection fee, I look at that. If someone gets their water disconnected, they don't, they're probably getting it disconnected because they don't have the money anyway.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right.
Yeah.
So, you might wanna, if you table it, just some of the bigger zoning ones, and like the bigger permits for home builders are gonna be applying. Those are the ones you might really wanna look at what other cities charge.
Yeah.
And you wanna be in line, you don't wanna be charging only twenty percent of what my ass is charging, then they're getting way more, you know? Yeah, that's, you kinda wanna make sure, the whole idea of these fees, especially for something like that, is you're covering your costs.
Yeah, and that's true.
You're passively covering your.
And that's exactly where we've been having a problem for the last couple of years, on, on not hitting our costs.
Well, you're, I mean, I didn't know, we talked about this years ago, years ago, with an issue. I remember what it was for, but I, we, we looked and you were way lower on some of the fees, like.
Right.
You were ten percent what the other communities were charging, and they were charging a thousand, you were charging a hundred.
Yeah.
So, I, my view of it is, and I've brought this up at the time, is you should look and just bring some of those into alignment with what. And usually they are about developers, I mean, the water reconnection fees. I mean, there is a, just understand, there's a cost of that, like, you're gonna have to pay a city staff person to go out there. And that's gonna cost money, so if you wanna reduce the fee, you might not be covering your costs on that.
Right.
But that's a policy choice, you can choose to do that, I'm just pointing it out that, you know, there is. Yeah, what most cities do is what Herb said, they, they, but I think the difference in Orinoco is. I don't think you really established a fair fee to begin with, but once you do that, I mean, my idea of it was, you take a good long look at a lot of this and say. We're gonna reestablish fair fees, and then from that point on, then you just go up a percent. And like, most cities do it once a year, the City of Winona does it every year, Jim, right? And they leave a lot of them the same year to year, but they'll go up on certain ones, two percent or five percent, you know? Um, and they have like a spreadsheet, and then they, they go through just the changes from year to year, but I, I don't remember which one it was. This is many years ago, we looked at it and said, you know, man, you were way lower. It was some building permit type thing, and you were way, way lower than other, other places. I can try, try and pull up the emails and, as an example to show you kind of.
We can do, check online, look at other cities.
Well, it takes time to do that, is the problem.
We have staff that's.
Take time to do that.
What I'd like to propose is that we, um, approve tonight what, um, city staff has proposed. Which is these whack charges, sewer charges, sewer rates, we need to get that established with a couple ideas of changing the meeting rooms. That's thirty dollars, um, I do think that's worthy of a change, but get that documented with a stays date. Take time to go back and look at the time involved with this, might be a good time to bring our city administrator back in. And have, we can review that with him at the same time, and maybe come back and march your apron with some refinements.
And the other thing is, you can adopt it all tonight and just change it in a month, you know, that's fine too, so, it just depends.
Oh, yeah, that's what I meant, so change what we have here in our packet from Renee. We'll look at gems, but we'll do a more in-depth review, and, and, and I'll put a second update in a couple of months or so.
I do have one question, you know, what is a right of way permit?
That's if you wanna use the public right of way, so like, an, an example of that is if you're constructing a house, and you need to shut the street down. And basically take on the right of way as your own private property for a period of time, you would pay money and get a permit. And then you would get the right to exclusively use, it's essentially a license, they're licensing that space to you for two days or whatever. Um, other, other common, um, use of that would be use of the public park for a wedding. And so like, you wanna have a wedding, and so you, you granted a permit, and sometimes a full-on license agreement to use that. License that right of way to you, so that it's your, for the period of that time, you hold the city harmless. You pay for insurance and name the city, and then you get to use it however you wanna use it. That's what that is, and that's, that's extremely, I mean, that, yeah, that's like probably the most common one.
I think also, correct me if I'm wrong, but it also could apply to somebody wants to plant a tree in the right of way.
Absolutely, an encroachment, so that.
In the right of way, if you wanna plant a tree or put some decorative landscape out there, uh, cuz it's in the right of way, and, uh.
In order to have.
Put it in there and utility line comes through, there's no reason why city has to go back and repay your landscape, fix your landscape.
So a lot of times, if it's more complicated, you should be doing a full-on contract, all the license agreement, instead of a permit, but that. The permit is usually for things like that, like a small encroachment, or a very temporary use of a very small defined space. Then you don't wanna have to pay a lawyer every time to draft a full agreement every time, you'd rather just give him a permit for two days, you know, that kinda thing.
Okay, the way Ryland's explaining that is, the extension of your driveway comes out to, out to the street, if it comes all the way to the blacktop. That somebody, you know, utilities work, needs to be done underneath your driveway, you don't have to repair, repair your driveway, I can understand that to start with.
Right, yeah.
So I make a motion, we approve the fee schedules as shared, presented by Renee, by shop, by city staff. On page two of the sheet.
Make a friendly amendment to that round? Okay, that we put it as unfinished business so that we can bring it back up again, and, and.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, that does.
That's how we come back to us, yeah. Cause unfinished business. For a second.
I'll second that then.
So which sheet are we actually, what again, this one?
The first two that are.
The, the next sheet.
Yeah, first two sheets.
Gray sheets?
Yeah.
We use gems as evaluation going forward.
Yes, the ones that are colored.
Yep, it's these two sheets.
Yeah, but it's gonna be open for us to come back and.
Did you have your second then?
Yes.
Any other comments? All in favor, say, are we saying aye?
Aye, aye, aye.
Next item is a, um, L M C City of Excellence Award. I think would be great to apply for, uh, this is the different categories, one is the population under five thousand. Would be our wastewater treatment plant, municipal sewer project, no stations. Uh, for a city our size, I think it's an excellent candidate for. This award's a thousand dollars for our city, but it's more importantly just the recognition of the work that has been done for. Just to this point, and for our residents as well.
I agree, I think it's good to do that, fill that up.
So we, um, Joe will help us put the, put the, um. Presentation together, there's, um. Yeah, there's a, you submit a application, and if you're accepted to come back, they make a videotape of the city project. Um, and then it's presented at the, uh, annual, L M C annual event, which is gonna be in Rochester this year in June. I've been, I've, I've seen several of these, as, as maybe some of you have also seen at this annual events for. Parks, swimming pools, just enhancements of the community, and this is a very, very worthwhile project, and I hope that they see that as well. So, back in April, or excuse me, November, um, Joe and I presented a presentation to the wastewater's. Uh, annual event up in Kirkland Park, and so there's, there's a lot of information that Joe's put together already. That we could apply to this application as well, so, it has to be in by. April nineteenth. With the council's approval, I'd like to. Prove you're working forward to do this.
I make a motion that we do that, you know, in a second.
Any other comments? All in favor, say, are we saying aye? Next item is, um, title eighteen. Almost a comment on this, I just, well, it has to do with stuff being dropped off at the, with the clerk's office, and they, you know, it's.
Our clerk is reading the documents for all the documents in the office, and I just don't think that anybody should be able to go in there and dig through stuff. Because she is responsible, you know, we don't have, uh, we don't have a clerk at the time, but we do have a, an assistant clerk. And unfortunately, it, it lays on her response, on, on her shoulders, if somebody is in there and removes documents that. That shouldn't be removed, you know, there's been some questions of, of the permits on the trailer and stuff up there. Of the permits on the trailer and stuff up there, that where was, where was that, where was that stuff at? Cause we haven't been able to find that either, but it's, it's popped up. You know, there's, uh. What's the, what's the other, another situation where? Maybe you can help me, Jim, there's another one with the, uh.
Hey, my Glenn's motor.
Glenn's motor coach with, we didn't find out until the tour of the, um. For the administrators, that there's gonna be people living in it, or that there, that there is, uh, apartments in it. I don't know, is it a fire department?
That's not what, no, um, that's, your, your information is incorrect. I talked to the owner, and I also talked to the manager, and those, um. Quarters up there are for drivers that live up in the cities, up north. And they come down here, and they need to leave at three in the morning, so they come in there and they could rest, they're not rented. They're not living quarters, they're, well, there's, I mean, there's bedrooms and a bathroom and a kitchen, but it's meant to be used for.
It's similar to, it's similar to the way a fire department, like in Rochester, is set up, where they have, where they have temporary quarters, is what it is. But now.
Yeah, I guess it's temporary quarters for them to rest.
Why did we not find that out till? I, I guess I questioned that, oh, did we not find that out until the. Un- until the, the tour. That's something that, I know I wasn't involved in the, uh, the building planning of it, but. There's still, nobody knew that, did you know that?
No.
Okay.
I don't think their plan came to be seen.
How did that get started?
Their buildings, I think.
You know, that's where I'm at, is just.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
Just that the clerk is responsible for everything in the office, and it's, that's just the way it is. You know, it's nothing, it's nothing against the clerk, but I don't think anybody is, anybody should be in the office signing all the computers and stuff either, I'm referring to you right. You know.
I'm not signing all the computers. I go ahead and.
You don't do anything to, on the computers, or you're not digging in files when you're upstairs in the other office?
I'm having to sort stuff out for when.
That's, those are documents.
I'm not taking anything.
Those are documents in charge, that the clerk's in charge of, I don't think you should be doing it. Okay, just be clear on that.
I just wanna say that this city would not be in the shape that it is today if you did not have a mayor that was actively working here. And sorting out files, we have come up with more files, you talk about the files that have not been filed. I don't know this for a fact, but I've heard that before there was, they were stacked high. We now have a system, that we, we are starting a filing system, that's how we found some files. So I don't think you should criticize free labor, we have nobody working here right now. So if you want your clerk, deputy clerk to quit, she's almost had three nervous breakdowns on me since I've been here. I think you need to apologize to your mayor, that is really uncalled for, that you would even say that. We have people, other councilmen coming in and asking for all kinds of stuff, and we have to try to find that. And he had, they have a right, but that too has to come to an end, we can't just serve each one of us. This gentleman has helped us get somewhat organized, I can't even believe that you would say that.
This is, this is coming to an end with.
You, you're hoping that it comes to an end, the more people that you push out here. That's all right, the more people that you push out here, you're, you're going to lose some boys, we can't handle the, the. The weight of it anymore, we just cannot do it, and so, um. I, I think that there's nothing that's missing, if it's missing, it was missing a long time ago. Because we have found files and we're putting them so that you can find them. The next time you come in and ask for something, I'd be able to go get it out of the filing cabinet and show you. Yes, uh-huh, well, thank you.
And, and I, I do believe that, that things are getting organized, and I think that you've done a lot of work, I, I. I came in the, the morning after, and, and I know what Ryland. Uh, that you had to, had to work through, okay, and, and. You know, it, it was a lot, uh, no question about that, and I'm, I'm glad that, that things are finally starting to get, get organized.
Staff should be able to trust every one of the councilmen.
Absolutely.
Okay, so with that being said, and the council has to support staff. And not come in and ask for individual things, you work as a body, and that's the one thing that I find in the city. We've got councilmen coming in all the time asking for things, that's not the way you operate, you have to come here and vote, and then we'll do it. That's how it is, and that has to be how it happens.
That's why you don't see me up there.
Well, we always want you to come in, if you have a question, ask it, and we'll try to get it done for you, you know, we've helped explain things to new people. But it's not like you can come in and say, write this letter and do this, and that's what we kinda found with these building permits, we didn't. You know, we aren't writing any letters because we don't know, the attorney has to write the letter, or your city's gonna be in a big lawsuit, that's what's gonna happen. So, sorry.
There is a whole bunch of statutes about.
Yeah.
Records management that you're required to do, and it's not the mayor or any, any specific council member, you're required to have policies for your.
Right.
Records maintenance, file maintenance, right, you know. I think what you're addressing is that Ryland is looking at non-public data, that's not accessible to him under the data practices act. Or, I'm putting words in your mouth, but if that's what you're saying, you know, that's, the council needs to address that by a policy. And then all the members of the council need to comply with the policy, it usually comes into play, to be honest, with the police department, you don't have a police department. But a lot of the police department records are non-public, like, that's all, that's all, just cause you're on the council. Some council numbers in some cities think, oh, I'm on the council, therefore I can see active investigation police information, which is way illegal. Is way illegal, so there's all kinds of laws about data retention, you have to have a data retention schedule, not sure you have that or not, or.
No, we don't, and that's what Renee and I have talked about, we need to get started on that records retention schedule.
Right, records retention, so that you don't have so many old records, and then how you're storing records, there's requirements, you have to have a policy to do that, and, and I'm not. I mean, there's so many issues that I'm not like saying do it today, but, yeah, I mean, there's all kinds of laws that govern this. And, um, but most of them don't, don't, not linked to one council member like you, or you, or you. Seeing a record, they're linked to how you're storing records in general, and, and the policies that the city has, so in the future, you know. That's something totally, like, in a long range, maybe not immediately, but you should take a look at that, and. You know, when, uh, Sandy was here, I mean, you should have, I don't know if you ever went in her office, but I mean, it was just. There were no, I mean, there was stacks and stacks, and you couldn't even see a desk in there, and she knew it, but.
Right.
She was just overworked and couldn't deal with it, so that's more the issue to me, and that's, that's been on my mind for a while, to be honest with you. But it's not with Ryland snooping through documents, I mean.
I know, I think things are, are getting better, and, and definitely more organized and things are, you know.
And. Sort it out, but, um, you know, Paul, I don't understand, this is the third month in a row that you brought this, this paper to us. Well, I've seen it three times.
I've already seen the first time, first time was last month.
No, the first time was when you bought the signing checks.
That wasn't that paper.
That was the same type of information, I don't know, it just seems like it's a personal vendetta, it's me or my office. I'm not sure what the issue is, but, you know, we try and leave personal agendas at the door, you know, if this is city business, that's fine, but I just. You know, I, I appreciate your, um, um, time of looking into details, but I, I'm sorry, that's just the way it comes across, and. If that's something we're gonna see every month, I guess we'll just have to continue to work on that, but, uh. I just, um. It was right, it doesn't make for, uh, maybe I'm at fault for all these things, I don't know, but all I know is that it just comes across as being. Very personal, and, um, I take offense to that, and maybe you don't respect this office for whatever reason, but, uh. That's all I have to say.
Next one's mine. Yeah, and, and this came to, to my attention when I was over at the fire hall. And, and, and Kent, um, has to file these papers that are with the state, and I guess there's. Some of this that, that he told me had not been done, and so I just put in, uh, the memo that he, he gave me, and then. We were looking at, at a few years, I think it's two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. That, he still has to get or send over to the state, so I just wanted to bring it. Up, and I, I know there's so much stuff going on, uh, but I just wanted to, to bring it to our attention that, that that needs to be done.
Well, I think we can give an update, if you wanna share with him, you got some incorrect information or something, if you wanna share.
Um, we have, the fire relief, we have put all of the money that we've received. Um, for two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three together, the, there's a report that has to be filed by March fifteenth. Um, and all of your year-end reports, and all of the reports that were supposed to be done have been done, except. I think there's two left for us to finish, this is one of them. Um, I'm not sure if how far back we have to go, or, and I do think that this is something that. The city with this ten percent that we get from gambling, um, man, what you just spent right. Two weeks ago would, would be, or this last week, with the fire truck would be enough for the ten percent for the last twenty years. So, um, I do think that, and I have talked with Renee, I think that we need to bring this up to our auditors. And the auditor should set up a schedule for us that, that guides us through as where that ten percent is going. It could be do- donated to a five oh three, it does not have to go back to the fire department. So if you really go through of all of the money that you've over. Or that's been over your budget, you can claim some of that for, you know, for, for the fire department, the radio's tonight. Doesn't have to come out of the general fund, it can come out of that ten percent, and it can go to other organizations within your community. Uh, it was the same with this one-time money, when I first got here, I tried to explain that someone else could have that. Didn't have to just go to the fire department, there were all kinds of other areas within your city, oh my god. I thought I was gonna be run out of town with the fire truck, because I said that. Right away, they said, oh, no, it was only fire department, that's not true, that's not true. That one-time money didn't have to all go to the fire department, there were other areas that the city could have used it in. But, okay, now that's done with, you've spent that money, so that's, we're trying to work on that, but everything like we say. I don't know, Ken Johnson, I think, sent me a memo, maybe the first week I started, and I did not take that serious. I have been looking through the, all of the reports that have been done so far, so it takes some time to set that up and kind of research. But we've got all of twenty-three ready to go to the state, and we're hoping to have that done by the fifteen.
I, I think that's great, no, it was just, I hadn't, I had no idea on this, okay.
Well.
And, and I got a question out, and it's like, it's the first that I really realized that, you know, it was sitting in limbo. And, and those are the years that, that Kent mentioned to me, that's, that's the only, that's the only.
He may not have seen the form from Sunny or Jerry Lynn.
And it could be, it, it could, and, and I'm not doubting that, I just, you know, when it comes, I think it's good for me to just follow up on that as well. To make sure that, that.
I think Kent should have been told to come and talk to me, that's what should happen. It's not like every councilman can take staff on, either you have to give staff a chance, and especially with your new person. You know, come and talk to them, make sure that they know what has to be done here, and then maybe they'll can get it done. With more staff, more time, or, that's, so that's good, I'm glad that you brought it up, that's where we're at, where we're.
And I would save this, it's a good handout here, that you put in there, kind of explains it succinctly on one page, so. Save that for that new guy, maybe make a folder for it, put it in there.
Absolutely.
This is, cause he isn't gonna know anything.
No, he's not.
And, um, yeah, I think it, I agree with this Johnson guy, I think you gotta file the report, and you gotta use the money pursuant to that.
That's right, that's right.
But like you say, they probably, might have, have been doing that, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I, I just didn't know, but that's why I wanted to break it to.
It might be best, so just focus moving forward, instead of having your auditor go on a flatless chase, I mean, it's.
And we have started such a folder, um, Mr. Two. So that we have something, so that the new person has something to go by.
I'm guessing it came up as a result of liaison to the fire department.
Yes, that's all the reason why it came up.
Who's the liaison?
Jim.
Oh, you're the liaison.
That's why he mentioned it to me, and so I, I was gonna follow up, like, if I tell somebody I'm gonna follow up, I'm gonna follow up, so.
I do think it's good not to have council liaisons so heavily that they are always the person, you know, I deal with Kane. As a supervisor, and I think that's how it should be for your new supervisor, or your new city administrator. He should be able to deal with the department heads, and then if something goes haywire. Okay, we can go to a liaison council, but I, I think it's better that we have this working relationship here at city hall. With the fire department also, um, you know, we get a little bit strong sometimes and say enough spending to the fire department, but. That's when they have to come to the council and rally you guys, you gentlemen.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, um, one, one more thing, just real briefly before the consent agenda motion. Herb, I was gonna mention this earlier, so, uh, we're gonna have you be the alternative for the first responders meeting. Jim is the first responder liaison, it's, uh, first Monday from six thirty to seven. And if Jim can't make that, you're more than welcome to join in, um, for the meeting, um. To listen in, I guess would be the right way to say it, so, but, case Jim can't make it, that's, uh, that's, we would expect.
So if that's optional first responders, that's gonna be for fire. For fire. I do fire.
Oh, I'm a first responder.
That, that does, yeah.
I, I was the alternate.
I'm still the.
So it'd be me, okay, and so.
Okay.
So it would be, you'll follow after me.
Okay, so I'll just come and see how, what you're doing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, and I'll let you know when, when that's going on.
For the fire.
Yeah, for the fire.
Fire department.
First responders.
No, those two got the first responders.
So, you and I'll have the fire.
It's on first, okay.
We'll talk about seconds.
Mine's a film.
Motion for the consent.
I, I have, uh, one question, if we had to, that, that, I think it says, and I think you're really gonna, uh, you've been up to the, the day. At the Capitol, right, before, Ron?
I'm sorry?
You've been to the day at the Capitol?
Oh, yes, yeah.
You know, which is, which is kind of, and I went up last year, you know, and I saw that on there for, for you. Uh, the thing that there was, I was looking at, at, at number ten. Okay, on the building permits and, you know, just out of curiosity. Of, of what they are, which is, you know, just to know what, what, what's happening there. Cause I, I was looking at, um, new construction on a building, three of them are buildings, um. New storage barn, which, which would be, okay, but is that self, self-storage unit, is that the existing one that they're putting next for? Building on, is that what that is? Um, this is, uh, under the permit report, that's in the consent agenda. And I don't know, I mean, my, my thing has been all.
In front of me here, I don't, oh, okay, yeah.
I know that when they were.
Oh, okay, yes.
When they were blacktopping out there and in the storage area, they left one that was open, and it looked like on their blueprints. That they were gonna build another unit there, is that what that is?
Right, they're, um, the original owner, um, had plans to add. One, two, three, four new buildings, I think it was, and he built.
Two?
Two of them, I think.
Yeah, and there, there was, they, they didn't blacktop that other one that was.
Right, where it's gonna be.
Open, yeah, and so I was wondering if that's when that went on.
So what's happened is this is a, there's a new owner, um, for that self-storage unit. And they're finishing up those plans to build those self-storage units from the original site development and building plans.
Okay, cause I know that they've been locking the gate too, I've seen that, which has been really good. Yeah, I think that, that, that's very positive, what about the, the other one up on top, that's a commercial one, which one's that?
Now, what is the address?
Um, that's, uh, twenty-one ninety-four.
Yeah, but that's, that's a Rochester address, right, cause that's, that's the owner's address.
Yeah, that's a Rochester address.
Yeah, cause I tried to look it up.
It's up at the top of the hill, at the west side of fifty-two, was.
Yeah, that's not.
Yeah, new construction says building commercial.
Yeah, and then.
Can you comment on that? Renee, do you remember which one that is?
I have to look it up.
I have a feeling I know what it is, but I don't want to say it without looking it up.
You know, I mean, we, we just, uh, planning and zoning are trying to make sure we don't have the issues that we had before that, that just to double check. Okay, and, and so, and, and we're trying to be very proactive. And I think you see that with the meetings to try to do stuff, especially with WSB coming on now to make sure that, that we're doing things and looking at things proactively.
Well, that's, that's a good point. I, you know, we still rely on our city staff and work with the building service people to, and with Mike and with, um, Phil too, who balances.
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely. But, but I'm just, you know, trying to, to be.
PNC should still know what's going on so we don't get blindsided, you know?
Yeah. Cause I know the, whether it's a site plan or building review plan, there's things put in place for, to review those and, not that you shouldn't be able to look at it, but the point is I think we need to be mindful of how quickly we, your process to get answers back to those owners too.
Well, no, and which is, which is good. I mean, um, it's, it's something that with me, I'm able to kind of look a little bit differently because I've got the time. You know, and I again, just want to try to turn around and make things work smoother and easier and, you know.
And, you know, so there's no status, so we don't know what's going on.
Okay.
Either it hasn't been approved or hasn't been looked at yet and it may not even go anywhere.
Okay.
So I think that's another reason for the status is that.
Do we know where it's at, what they're talking about at all?
Well, let Renee find out what she's got going on and, and do it that way, so.
Until it comes more official or, or I should say public knowledge, I guess that might be the proper way to say it.
I have a pretty good feeling I don't know what it is, but I don't want to say it without looking.
Tell you what, that, that's all I wanted to go on with the consent.
I'm glad it's in the report. I'm glad, I'm glad it's in our consent agenda.
Oh, absolutely.
This is something we haven't had before, so.
Oh, no, I, I think it's great. I mean, I'm very, very happy for, for that. I just, you know, looking at it and you put it in there, I'm, I'm observing it.
And, and no, I'll follow up. Cause I think things like this, PNC needs to be aware. Even if they have the list to understand, okay, what's in the works. You know, because we got blindsided by the Hamilton group and we, they wanted us to react.
No, you weren't blindsided.
Yeah, we were.
Well.
They wanted us to change the only code.
You know, there's a certain thing we, the city works with developers on a confidential basis too. And as I explained in my email to the PNC committee, the time events that happened, that we had a meeting with Hamilton, we had numerous meetings. Just very preliminary, where's water, where's the sewer, that type of just background information. But the day they showed us a plan of what the concept was going to be within a week, that was on this PNC agenda. Unfortunately, PNC was canceled for that month. You didn't have a quorum or whatever the case was being. But we brought it, you know, it was my suggestion that we come to PNC when you come with the plan. Up until that plan is just just verbiage, you know, there's nothing concrete. But when they came to you, that was within a week or ten days of when I saw it for the first time. And I said, okay, you got to go to PNC. PNC has to see this concept because you need feedback. You gave that feedback. I mean, we've been talking to them for two years plus.
That's where I was going, because Paul even mentioned, he said, I, I talked to him six months ago. And said, I think he, his comment was he was surprised that they were just coming to PNC. Not, not.
How about this Paul, Paul Gennettow?
Yeah.
Cause they were, they had seen her with them.
Cause they were, they didn't, Hamilton didn't know if they were working with a developer or if they were going to do it themselves. And when they showed us the plan, they said, okay, we're going to do it ourselves. And so that's when they said.
So let me, let me ask. What, what's the trigger for PNC to get involved then?
When you, in my opinion, when city gets a permit, a variance, a rezone, CUP, that's the function of Planning and Zoning Commission. That's the vehicle for getting those things approved in front of council.
Well, and honestly, when you redo your ordinance, most cities have that in the ordinance very specifically. Very specifically. So it's like usually, but I'll just tell you what most cities do. Most cities, you wouldn't have a planning commission even see anything until there's an application to do something. And so, but it's a very frequent, I mean, actually the most common scenario, joking in China, if you want, is prior to the, the submission of a subdivision application, variance permit, whatever. The city engineer will have worked with them. And hopefully they've hired a professional engineer themselves to work with our professional engineer. And so then when they submit, whatever they submit, it's not wrong. It's got, they give it input. But I think to have the Planning and Zoning Commission on a granular level, get involved with those preliminary discussions is never going to work. I mean, I don't think any city does it that way and it's never going to work. I think at that, you know, at the point they submit something, then you have to, then Phil should be involved advising you what to do. You know, he should then review the application and say, these are the problems, you know, they didn't do sidewalks, blah, blah, whatever, you know, whatever it is. Issues, here are my issues. And he, I've seen Phil's memos. They're pretty good, pretty organized. So he bullet pointed things that you need to, and that's, and then you would read, read his memo and the application at that time. But typically, most cities would delegate all of that to the city administrator. You know, for example, zoning opinions. So, and this is something that you'll have to address when WSB writes your ordinances. Who is going to be allowed to do that? Is it just the administrator that can give a zoning, zoning, zoning opinion? And then that opinion can be appealed to the planning commission, which is how most cities do it. And so like that thing with the mobile home, like, so there was an email sent from the, you know, the building permit guy is just going to sign off on the permits. He happened to pull that particular permit and send an email. Because he thought there was something wrong with that particular permit. And then who gets to make the decision? And then the administrator can make the decision under most codes. Or they can choose to go to another body, planning and zoning, if they don't know. You know, like, let's say Sunny had read that and said, I don't know how to interpret this code provision, which would have, I think, would have been reasonable because it's complicated. Then you could have went for the planning and zoning and have them make a determination as to what the meaning of, you know, constructed, whatever it was, constructed to be non-mobile, I think, you know, whatever. Have fun, have fun doing that. But yeah, that's, so that, that's how it's supposed to work. I mean, planning and zoning shouldn't be, you know, members of the planning and zoning shouldn't be talking to a developer directly. In fact, that's, you don't want to do that for a lot of reasons. You know, um, you're going to be making, the main reason is the, the board is going to be making the ultimate decision or recommendation probably, depending on how you set it up. But, and so you don't want to have them prejudge it. You know, you don't want to have them, you know, hearing all the facts and then, you know, you want to have it presented in an orderly fashion. But that all boils down to city staff. Like you have to have staff that have time to do that stuff. And typically I've seen like that falls on the engineer. I mean, because the engineer knows, can read the code, work with the other engineer on, you know, what grading needs to be done, what, whatever, you know? That's my view of it, how a normal city would do it. I just think you lack staff here.
Yes, you do.
And so.
And, and, and we're working on, trying to get all this stuff going in the right direction.
So I hope they address that and WSB should go through. The most important thing that they do, in my view, is rewrap the procedures.
Absolutely.
Not the substance, but the process.
Yeah.
So, so it's very clear who's to do what. And who, who has the authority to do what. I always talk to you guys about authority, like what authority does the planning and zoning have? Like the review of that WSB contract. I mean, I look at that and I say, the planning commission has no authority to say anything about that. It's a city council contract. However, the council voted to send it there and asked, so I think that's fine because you pulled that contract out and sent it to, and said, send that WSB contract for their review. Now, I don't think you can do that. But, but absent you doing that, no city would have that in their code, that that would be a, a, a task of the planning commission to review a contract that's signed by the city. I mean, that's, never seen it, you know?
Okay. So then what I'm hearing then is really planning and zoning doesn't get involved in everything, building wise.
Right. Well, and those are building permits, right?
Right.
So those, I mean, you should be hiring a professional building official who is certified, has a certification. Like I don't have that certification. An administrator doesn't have it. Like they really can't make the decision on it. It's got to go to the guy, guy or gal with the certification. And you've got to hire that person that has that state licensed, you know, state of Minnesota licensed building official certificate. Otherwise, I mean, it's, you don't want to be doing it any other way. And they, they need to take responsibility when they issue these permits that they've reviewed it. Um, and then the question is, what if they make a mistake? And I think you guys are claiming they made a mistake with that trailer one. And, and we'll see.
So the gist of it is, we don't need.
No.
And planning zoning, we don't need to get involved
Right.
in everything. The only time we get involved is if there's something we need to review.
Correct. And, and I think that the trailer issue is a perfect example of that. So if I had done that, if I had been involved with that, I would have told Sunny, you can make a decision. She had asked me and she didn't ask me, but if she had, I would have said, you can make a decision on that or you can ask planning and zoning to review it. Those are her options.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's called, in, in most codes, it's called a zoning determination. So it'll say something like zoning determinations are to be made by the zoning administrator. And then you'll have a definition of who the zoning administrator is. And in most small cities, it's a city administrator. Cause most like Plainview, Caledonia, all of them, it's a city administrator. So if they get to make the decision, they're authorized to just make the decision. But then they have to make the decision internally. Well, if the building official doesn't even know what it means and he's the building official, should I really be doing that or should I delegate that to the planning commission, which I think she should have done in that case, but, because it's complicated now. It's complicated. But it's, I mean, you can't have the planning commission look at every single building permit. That's, no one does. I mean.
But then it's like this, uh, having this report that there is on a monthly basis gives an idea of what's going on. And that's what we've asked for. And yeah, thank you Renee for doing it. I appreciate it.
Well, and honestly, I think you could look at that if you provided that and you have a problem with one. I mean, I don't, you can, every, ask the city administrator, can be, you know, what, you know? But I think the appropriate thing is exactly what Shirley said. You don't have to make a federal case out of it. You could just simply try and call the administrator and ask, what's up with that?
Yeah, I know. And, and rightly so. I mean, and Shirley's been good. And, and when I've turned around and asked to look, you've, you've given it to me and I go in the other room and I give it back to you. So nothing leaves. So.
I mean, it would be better for all of us that we don't have to have every single thing at the city council meeting. When you get this new administrator, like the issue with that ten percent, it'd be better or the regular or any number of things, the data stuff you're bringing up, you should just go ask Ryland, you know, and you look at those documents or you should just go ask him. And then it's the, it'd be administrator's job to deal with it. And so we don't have to litigate everything.
And, and Shirley and I just talked about that first, okay? And then I thought this, maybe make sure that it didn't go by the wayside, so.
Yeah, so that's my two cents on the whole zoning thing. But I, I'm keenly aware of this, that the process is kind of muddied right now. But it's not your fault. It's just your ordinances are not great and you're, you're addressing it. You're paying a lot of money to have them be drafted. So that's good. That's, that's what I've been asking for. You did exactly what I suggested, so. But, but it's going to take a year. And so.
We're working our way through that. Well, on that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah.
We have to approve the consent.
Oh, well, that's right, okay.
I make a motion to approve the consent.
I second.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both through?
No, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Aye.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Thirty-four.
Well, I like that. It's nice to meet you.